I mean, if you're real dead, doesn't class your public's living for ten? And you're alive at classes in your life, process.
Right.
So my iPad is not loading here.
Mine's taking forever, too.
Is it? So I think I'm gonna run downstairs and get my laptop from work. So I will be back in about however long it takes me to run down there. Oh, maybe, maybe it's back. No. Just took a while. I did it like three times, so great. Forget that. All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Englewood City Council Study Session on Monday, September 24th. And we have a full council tonight. Our first item up tonight is the August 2018 Financial Report. This is informational and are acting well. Actually, we have someone else presenting tonight, so Acting Deputy City Manager Dorothy Hargrove is going to introduce, actually, Kevin Ingles.
I hope you all know Kevin Ingles, our accounting manager. Maria Sabata unfortunately had an illness in the family and was unable to join us tonight, but Kevin is perfectly capable and knowledgeable about the budget, so I will have him talk about the financial report and the budget presentation later.
Great.
Take it away, Kip.
Thank you. Evening, Mayor and Council. So we're gonna start with the August 2018 Financial Report. We're now two-thirds of the way through the year. I'm gonna go through a few of the highlights.
Information, could we at least, I mean, there's public that already knows that we, that our CFO is no longer with the organization. I don't, I think it's a little odd not to at least acknowledge that. All right, maybe Acting Deputy City Manager, maybe you can explain what's going on? That's a question, right? So go ahead and let Dorothy answer.
Yes, thank you. Kathleen Rinkle, the Director of Finance, has decided to take an extended leave and will not be returning to the city. And Acting Director of Finance, these titles. Acting Director of Finance is Maria Sabata, who had been the Deputy Finance Director, has been involved in the budget and trained in finance, certainly as an experienced professional. And she'll be taking over the reins of the Finance Department.
Okay. And when did she start with us? A lot of the people don't know that she was even with us, so.
I would hesitate to give an exact date, but I think it's been two months.
Seems like it's been about two months.
Yep.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Ingles.
Thank you for answering.
And maybe move the mic just a little bit closer. I don't know if you can hear over there or not, but.
Sure. Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm having a little bit of a head cold, so I'll try to speak up. So we're two-thirds of the way through the year. In the General Fund, overall revenues are $3,217,000 more than in 2017. Year-to-date revenues have exceeded year-to-date expenditures by $5,361,000. Sales and used tax collections are up $1,684,000, and that's an 8.78% increase over 2017. Pages six and seven on the report show the breakdown by area, and you can see most areas are running above 2017 numbers. The General Fund total year-end fund balance is estimated to be $13,773,000, or 28.9% of projected revenues. Those are really the highlights for the report. The year's going well. Hopefully, that continues. But if I'll, I'd be glad to try to answer any questions at any of you, my bad.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions while you're thinking? I have one on page four with the estimated year-end assigned fund balance is $7,365,000. How realistic at this point do you think that is?
So, a lot of the revenues for the city are seasonal. The summer is a lot heavier in revenues than toward the fall and early spring. We're still estimating that to be a pretty realistic number at this point, even though we're running ahead of schedule from last year, so.
That's the most we've had in any time I've been on. Other questions from council? Mayor Portem Russell?
I have a question on page number one where it talks about the police headquarters construction. It says estimated year-end balance, $8,40,565. How realistic is that? I mean, that's not the figure that's being used in the budget book.
So this, that calculates because of the open purchase order that's on there? That maybe roll into next year some of the spending? That's probably the difference between the budget book and what this is calling a year-end estimate.
Okay. I'll probably ask that question again when we get to the budget book, but all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have one more. In, on Area Three on page six where we have the bar graphs, it's really an interesting shift over time on some of these. Obviously, Area Seven is huge, continues to be our major, and that's something I'd love our citizens to realize, that anything they buy outside of the city, that when they do collect sales tax, it really does help us. But Area Three, it took this jump. Is this because of marijuana sales in that area, do you believe, or?
On page seven, there's some narrative. There was a fairly substantial business that reloadedated from Area Four to Area Three.
Oh, I forgot. Yes. I remember what that is now. I know exactly what that is now. Thank you, thank you.
Sure.
All right. Any other questions? Let's, Mayor Portem.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't put it down before. As a point of information, I usually turn my phone off. I did get a text. Somebody said that they were unable to get the streaming, and so I went over and asked IT about that. I believe somebody else, Sam Watson, has already, somebody already notified IT that it's not working. I'm sure he'll let us know if it's up and running. Is the audio available?
Yeah, the audio, the audio should be.
Just the streaming piece?
Yes, and it should be working right now.
Great. So apparently, we had a little breach in the video part of the audio streaming, is that, or the video streaming, is that right? Or was it just a user, do you think?
No, I think it was.
Okay, great. And so, folks that might be listening from outside the building, it should be working now. Thank you. All right, looks like we have no more questions. Thank you very much for presenting.
I think I'm gonna hang around for some of the rest of the stuff that's going.
Yeah, I bet. That might be you on item number two, right? Budget finalization discussion. This is our directional for management of the, so the Acting, oh, actually Daisy Yu and the Acting Finance, well, no, it's Kevin, Kevin Ingles again, are here to discuss the finalization of the budget and the questions that we posed last week and others that you may still have tonight, so. Can you kick it off for us with the first item there, or?
Yeah, I hope Daisy's ready.
Yeah, let me just make sure that this is.
Oh, sorry.
Got it. There we go. Okay. So, Good Evening Council, Daisy Yu, Management Analyst from the City Manager's Office. Today, we're here to discuss some of the feedback items that we heard from the public hearing last week. We have four items for discussion that I'd like to get your feedback on, the first of which is the funding for public, or I'm sorry, art in public places. There was a few comments last week that were in support of this, so staff is recommending that we put the $15,000 into the budget to fund art in public places, and that'll go into the capital budget. Really, the discussion item here is just to make sure that there is consensus among council to do this.
Councilmember Wink?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Analyst Yu. I'm in favor of having this funding continue for the Cultural Arts Commission.
Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you. I'm also strongly in favor of keeping it in the budget.
Councilmember Berantine?
You were the one that convinced me, Councilmember Wink, to go ahead and take it out, so if you could just give me a little bit more information on why you changed your mind, because I knew you wanted some of that funding to go for some of the rehab stuff and some other issues. So if you'd just convince me again, I guess, the other way.
It is a direct. Councilmember Wink, I guess that's a question for you. Do you want to answer that, or do you want to respond to that?
Sure.
Go ahead.
I want us as a council to always open our minds beyond the box that we may tend to think within. We're in a critical state in terms of finding funding appropriate enough to cover the capital needs at hand. And the night I made mention of this $15,000, we were talking about the tree disease and whether or not we want to prioritize that as well. And I wanted to encourage everyone to think about just what cuts we're willing to make today and into the future in terms of making sure the infrastructure is where it is. What are the trade-offs we're making? What are we willing to really cut? I don't ever want to cut arts money. I'm a big artist. I've been an artist since I was four years old. I wanted more for us to really, I was looking for challenge. I want us to think carefully and hard about what we're doing. Now, $15,000, part of me says, okay, if we have no roads to drive on and our bridges are crumbling to the ground, then do we really need art in our city? Are those pieces of infrastructure really to that level of disrepair? And does $15,000, which is pretty crucial to the Cultural Arts Commission, really make that much of an indent to those capital needs as much as they take away from what cultural arts can do, can continue to do in their annual initiatives? So, in thinking about it since then, I think they deserve their $15,000. I think it goes a lot farther there. I mean, it's, I think it's hard as a council to sit and say, no, let's not cut money from any place and let's move forward and go for a budget that we can't pay for. So, I don't want to be that person, but I think here, the $15,000 isn't going to do it, and I'm just looking for your help to help me understand how else we're gonna pay for these capital funds.
Thank you for explaining that. It was just kind of a little feeler out there. I kind of, because you had been a chair on that, or liaison on that board, when you put that forward, I figured that you were pretty well-informed on whether they actually needed it or not, and so that's why I supported it at the time. Thanks for the additional information.
Thank you, yeah. I mean, they have other funds, Member Berantine, and I think they could get it quite a bit done, but I know the reach that group is going for and the level of impact they've had so far, and so I want to allow them to continue to maximize every dollar they have at their disposal.
Others? We need consensus here. Councilmember Questa?
I'm going to pass on it. I'm happy to reconsider in the future. I do think things are too tight at a capital level. It's very encouraging to hear where things could be at the end of the year, and I'd be willing to look at it again in 2020. For the time being, I am going to pass.
Okay, so your pass is a no.
A no, correct. And that is to say that it's not a very worthwhile endeavor, but I think at this point in time, it's, tighten the belt a little bit on that one. Thank you.
Councilmember Sierra? Thank you. Councilmember Sierra?
I'm in favor in keeping the $15,000 for the yard. I think overall, when we start talking about the capital needs of the city, I think we need to have a larger conversation, other than the $15,000 that we're putting towards art in public places. So, you know, we just, you know, we have about three and a half to five and a half million dollars worth of dollars that we're putting towards capital projects yearly at current revenue. So obviously, if we're gonna meet that 77 million at some point, we need to generate revenue some other way, so I don't think the place to start would be with the $15,000.
Thank you. Councilmember Berantine?
I actually would not have considered cutting it prior to the argument that Councilmember Wink made before, but I'm going to join Councilmember Questa in believing that maybe we have to start somewhere and think outside of the box and start doing things, even when they're projects that are somewhat near and dear to us. I think one year would be a reasonable give in the current situation. Thank you.
I'm for it, supportive of it. I'd like to see us keep it in the budget. I think that it's a very, very small, it's like stumbling over pennies to pick up others. And so, it really, to me, is not going to have an impact on the larger picture. We need some pretty serious thinking about both the parks and what we heard last week from folks, as well as capital improvements that are much larger than this. So, it also does contribute to the quality of life and to retail, and I think anything that we can do that continue that vibrancy that brings in sales and creates place and feeling is really, really important, and this is a small amount of money to go quite a long way for that, in my mind. Mayor Portem?
Actually, I agree with Councilmember Questa and Councilmember Berantine that we have to start cutting somewhere, and if we don't start, if this council is not going to make the hard decisions, I'm just, I'm not, I'm all about saving the money, and I think there's other things we need to cut also. So, anyway, that's where I stand.
Right, looks, we have consensus to put it back on the budget.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Can you tell me exactly where that's gonna come? You said it'll go out of the capital improvement?
Capital.
That's where it was before. All right, thank you.
Yes. So, the second item, I want to clarify some of the staffing budget items for the Police Department. The way that the budget is proposed now, there are three additional positions within the Police Department, one of them being the Fire Inspector, the second is the Dispatcher. And then the third item, the way that it's budgeted right now, it's actually, we actually give that decision-making authority up to the Police Chief in how he best sees that position being filled in order to meet the needs of his staff. So, whether that is a sworn officer, or a code enforcement, dedicated resource, or a blend of the two, that decision will ultimately be made from the Police Chief based on the discussion we had at the study session at the end of August. I just wanted to clarify that that's how that's being budgeted right now in the proposal. It's not two separate positions, it's one position, and we definitely welcome council's feedback or guidance if you guys have any additional comments related to that.
Mayor Portem Russell?
I actually asked at the time for more clarification on the code enforcement. There are serious code enforcement issues that have come up. They've, the community has been upset about them since we've been talking about our strategic operating plan. And the flooding issue has brought up more issues, and I am very adamant that code needs to be addressed, and I would like more information about what we intend to do about code enforcement. We sat with no police officers, we were three police officers short, and we were doing okay with that, and now all of a sudden, we are adding another police officer? I think this council wants to move forward with code enforcement issues and addressing those. I mean, if you want to go around and get consensus on council, I think we need to do that.
Council, would you be interested in having the Chief of Police come up to tell us a little bit more about what he's thinking about with this in terms of positions? I think this is a decision that I know he's willing to speak a bit more specifically to. I would like to hear him, because I do think many of us wanted a little bit more in the code realm. So if you don't mind. Chief Counsel, thank you.
Thanks for having me. Well, at the, can you hear me? Okay. My decision's been made. I think it's very clear that the code enforcement position, in this case, will rule out for me. I mean, that's the one I want. And the police position was a placeholder, as you recall, and I think I'll get more pot for my buck with the code enforcement officer that could be more proactive, and, which is what I'm hearing from some of the community and whatnot. And I firmly believe that that's the direction to go.
Council, does that help answer any questions? Councilmember Wink?
Well, I.
Do you like to speak first?
No, go ahead.
You sure?
Yes.
So I was under understanding that personnel matters in terms of who the director-level staff want to hire to supplement and build and grow their teams is not up to council. And so, this feels like an exception, that we're actually asking the Chief of Police what he's doing with this extra staff and why, when council really doesn't delve into that level of detail with other hiring managers at the level, or at a similar level as is the Chief of Police. Am I wrong?
When we're adding a new position, I think we have a right to be asking, why are we adding a new position, and what exactly is it going to? And I think at any point, we can, you know, ask the questions of, are we covering what the city is legally meant to do? I don't, I don't think there's any problem with answering this question. City Attorney?
That's a great question. The only time that the City Council gets involved in staffing matters is when they're dealing with the budget, because the City Council gets to determine the amount of money to provide to each department. So, when a department wants to add a position, they're, they're asking for extra money, and the City Council's deciding whether or not to give them that extra money. Exactly what the standards are for that position and who will get the position, the City Council won't be involved at that level, but they will be involved in determining the scope of the budget.
Thank you. Thank you, that's a good question. Councilmember Berantine?
And that's unfortunate that we've had that kind of misinterpretation of what's going on, because the council controls the budget, and if we don't budget for the position, then the position doesn't exist. I appreciate the City Attorney's additional information on, you know, specifics on there. I am not interested in providing another code enforcement position until we, as a council, sit down and have a policy, which is in our purview, that's our job, is to set policy for whether we are proactive or reactive. That has been the major issue. Not necessarily really gotten good information on whether we have enough staff or not, but whether we have a bad policy, whether it's the culture of what we're doing and how we're interpreting, or whether we enforce the law or don't enforce the law. Those have been the biggest issues that have come forward. So until those policy and culture issues are addressed by this council, then I don't know whether we need another code enforcement officer, or whether it's been more that it's been expecting neighbors to complain on each other rather than enforcing it by a proactive policy from this council. So, I'm just, I rethought the, originally, Chief Collins, we said, you know, we'd open a placeholder for a police officer, and then he could decide whether he wanted to do code or not. I really would prefer that if we're going to do the position, that we do another police officer like we had intended, and revisit how we're going to handle code enforcement on a much larger scale before we just go dumping personnel and money into it without really realizing what the real problems are. And we have some very serious problems with code enforcement.
Thank you. Councilmember Questa?
Mayor. Chief, to go over what was just outlined then, so the three positions are what we would be voting on tonight, one being the Fire Inspector, and I think that you elaborated on that one prior, as well as the Dispatcher. Can you go over those two positions again and the necessities surrounding those?
Well, the Fire Inspector, if you go on their numbers, and I, and you caught me off-guard with the actual number of inspections they do each year, but they generally average around 1,300 inspections per year. And based upon an audit that we had this year, we have three, over 3,000 facilities that require inspection throughout the year, and we are falling short because we're averaging around 2,700, 2,800. Our agreement with Denver Fire is to conduct those, all of the inspections in one year, so obviously, we'd be out of line with that contract agreement. But having the third inspector would get us over that, would allow us to meet the number of inspections. And, you know, if you speak to the Fire Marshal or the folks in that discipline, it's all about health and safety, and you can't argue with that. And so, my feeling is, is that unless you set up an inspection schedule for every other year, we're kind of playing with fire there. Because then we're hoping, you know, you're kind of running the risk of, well, we hope they don't have, you know, an accident or an incident this year because we didn't get around to inspecting them. And so, our goal is to do yearly inspections for all of the facilities within the year, and the only way to do that is by hiring a third inspector.
And do we have an increase in businesses that we're now falling short on it, or have we never got to all the buildings?
Right now, we're averaging around 2,600, so we're not gonna meet that goal this year. And that's just simply based on two inspectors, and one's an inspector, one's the Assistant Fire Marshal. And, you know, and hopefully, with the addition of that third inspector, we can reach the maximum number of inspections, as well as if there's any free time, to have him assist the Fire Marshal in plan reviews, and, because most of her time is tied up with that.
But up to this point, it's always been the case that we've had two people trying to conduct all of the permit inspections.
Yes.
This is another one of those, man, I feel there's been more and more, where it's been an issue year after year after year after year, and now we're at this point where this council is being forced to address it. I'm happy to make these decisions, but it does seem to me that, I'm wondering how so many of these things got kicked down the road for as long as they did. Please.
And you know, we have tried to hire, I mean, that was part of the history of that. We were given the funding several years ago to hire, you know, a third person. And the problem was, is that when you look at the job description and the current salary range for these folks, it doesn't really, the salary range doesn't match what's going on in the, in the, in the community that, where the Fire Marshals are at. We're competing with the South Metro Fire District for their, you know, for inspectors. They just had a recent advertisement to where they're $20,000 ahead of us. And I've interviewed two folks that wanted that job, but said they couldn't afford to come to Englewood, because they were, it was 20,000 less. And so, and while we're at it, we're still in that same position now. And so, unless something happens, you know, Human Resources, you know, and, you know, what they do is they look at like cities, and they compare us to like cities, and that's why we're stuck. What we need to do is look at the, all of the different agencies to get a more current view, if you will. You know, some may say that we're not at the same level as the South Metro Fire District, but those are the ones we're competing against. And it took us two years to try to find somebody, and finally, dispatch became so critical that I repurposed that money to hire another dispatcher. And so, I suspect that's what's gonna happen again if, if we're approved at the current levels of salary.
And so, if I'm following that correctly, if we were to approve this position, you think that the salary we're approving is not going to be enough to even bring on that employee?
No, we tried, we tried for two years, and we had no takers, so. And so, it's just the system that's, that's created this dilemma for us.
Thank you, Chief. And to the code enforcement officer, I think something needs to be done with code enforcement. Based upon the vote we took at the last City Council meeting, we are gonna go forward with the mitigation, the flood mitigation studies, where we're just counting on things not going terrible in 2019, because it's gonna be a while before we get those results and actually start building in on infrastructure. We're counting on code enforcement to be out there, making sure that the.
Might want to move your mic up a bit more, you're a little bit soft.
Yes, you bet. We're counting on code enforcement to make sure the alleys are clean, so that we don't have blocked drainage, et cetera. And so, if it's a matter of we need to go to our proactive approach, if it's a matter that we need to hire another person, I think we need to make that decision sooner or later. I've heard this conversation come up several times now at this council, and I don't think we have time on our side on this one anymore. So, I'm happy to consider any one of these options, but I think we need to do something sooner than later. Thank you, Chief.
I wanted to ask you a question before I come back to you, if that's okay with you. What would be the amount that you would need the salary to be at? And I don't know what Councilmember Questa. And I don't know what councilmember Questa's intimating here that we've been kicking this down the road. I don't think that's what's been happening per se. It's just we've not been allocating enough money, obviously, for you to be able to hire someone. Is that what, that's what you're saying? I mean, we've had a couple of positions like this over time that just don't get hired for, but you're saying it's salary related.
You know, I think if we can just have a, an agreement to discuss this with our business partner with human resources and to get it to where it's competitive, and, you know, we're so far, we are so far behind right now that, you know, it's going to, it's going to take a bump of 15,000 or 20,000 to start. And, you know, and I was thinking earlier, you know, was that planned for the budget? No, but we plan for a police officer in the budget. And, you know, depending on which way we go, I still think there's probably some wiggle room in there to cover all three of these positions. But that's, in regards to Ms. Berantyne, you know, and her concerns. Something has to give and I'm more than willing to work with HR to try to figure out a way to make it more competitive, but like cities is not going to work in this case. And because we're right back where we were to start with.
Councilmember Wink.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree wholeheartedly with what member Berantyne said about allocating funds to a code enforcement officer based on the information we have and based on the research or the thought we've put through what code enforcement means for this city and how it's really working. Next door gets quite heated and neighbors can get quite heated with one another. I, as a researcher, don't quite feel I have justification or any true data to show that code enforcement is lacking or that we needed to go back to the proactive system versus the reactive. And, I mean, I think there's a larger discussion that needs to happen there. And so, I would hesitate. So, I'd like to have that discussion, one. Two, I would like to leave it up to the police chief to decide what, how he wants to staff his team. And three, I would love to see us supplement that fire position so that it's competitive and we can have the necessary staff. That is a position, since taking office here, I've known to be critical to the city and just lacking, so, yeah.
Let me see if I can summarize. You're saying that you would like the position still to be there and to let the chief decide whether it's code enforcement, whether it's a police officer, and then additionally, you'd like to see the fire inspector funded at the level that might be more marketable.
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Proton?
And actually, I wasn't necessarily asking for a code enforcement officer.
I know that.
I was asking for code to be addressed. So, now, my question is, and I'm okay with leaving the budget the way it is. And, and so, I guess what I'm asking then is, and maybe I asked this before, but I don't remember, about scheduling another study session to address policy on code enforcement. It could be that we don't need more code enforcement, we just need to, and I'm not all about proactive versus reactive because the balance is in the middle. So, I, I'm okay with this, but if we need more finances to address these code issues, what do we do? I mean, do you think we're going to need more finances to address?
No, I, if we go with the code enforcement, and yes, you're absolutely right, at the last session, you made it very clear that it was up to me to decide which way to go. And when we talk about proactive, they will not come out as jackbooted thugs. I mean, that's, you don't want a policy like that. That, a bunch of angry villagers then. So, you have to find a very comfortable place in your policy, even with an additional person because to be able to manage to check out all these alleys and things that have been ravaged by a flood, that could take one person an entire year. So, you have to really sit down and calculate where your, where your strategic plan will try to take you. And so, I fully endorse a future meeting of sitting down and having the code supervisor here as well to explain what, you know, what we're trying to accomplish. And, and so, and answer your final question, I think if we go with the code enforcement position, the fire inspector and the dispatcher, I think I'd be fairly, I know I'd be close to where I would need additional funding for the budget because the fire inspector's, well, it's going to be a little, it's going to be around the same amount of money for the, for the police officer. So, I think it'd be a wash. And anything else, if it was a little bit over, I could absorb that, so.
Right. Councilmember Berantyne.
It didn't get kicked down the road, so I want to make a little history because it just takes a council to a couple of new people and everybody kind of forgets. It was part of the contract with Denver for us to have that additional fire marshal. And we discussed this in depth last year and the majority of council made a decision to go ahead and get a dispatcher, two more dispatcher positions. Two dispatcher positions, we never filled, so we should have some additional money for maybe not filling those positions. I am concerned about doing another dispatcher position and not filling that for the majority of the year either. The argument last budget cycle was that the position stayed open and we weren't even hiring enough. I mean, we didn't offer enough money to go ahead and get anybody hired, so we just let it go and put the dispatchers in. So, it wasn't kicked down the road. Council made a very conscious decision not to do it. I objected to that last time mostly because the fire marshal also brings in funding for us as well, so it kind of ends up kind of paying for itself. I'm sure there's some diminishing return on there. So, I want to make sure that the position for the dispatcher may be something that we could go ahead and let the dispatcher position go up the amount of money for the fire marshal, keep our contractual agreement that we should have done from 2015 with Denver Fire on that, and that would take care of that piece. But it wasn't kicking it down the road, it was a conscious decision. The other is with code enforcement, I think there can be somewhere in between, you know, the jackboot kind of philosophy and expecting neighbors to complain on each other instead of an equitable, fair enforcement of our laws. And I think we're looking for somewhere in the middle there where we have code enforcement enforcing the law instead of neighbors enforcing the law on each other. So, that's where I'm a little concerned about trying to up code enforcement until we make a policy decision because I don't know where we're at with that. I mean, in areas where you have people, neighbors hold each other accountable, maybe there is enforcement in where they're more tolerant, but the law shouldn't be based on how tolerant your neighbors are of something, nor should somebody's life be in jeopardy like the mattress, you know, causing that, exacerbating the flood because maybe people in that area didn't want to complain on each other. I don't know. But I would like, as Mayor Proton Russell suggested, that we get a little bit more information on the code before we do that. I think we have an obligation to meet our contractual agreement with the fire and get the fire marshals, as we originally agreed in the contract in 2015, get that up and try to get an assessment of how much we save this year from the positions that weren't filled because they couldn't hire the dispatchers and see what, how reasonable it is even to get a dispatcher again this year since we barely got the last two and see where they're at. So, maybe if we could do without the dispatcher, raise the amount for the fire marshal. And I agree with councilmember Wink. I would like to, after the budget is set, how people move their money around within their budget is one thing, but it is our obligation to make those decisions based on representing the community on what positions we find. So, I don't think it's dictating how somebody runs their department. It is the representation that we're obligated to do.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. I'm very much in favor of the dispatch position. The last time we discussed it, the dispatch, the dispatchers that we currently have are severely overburdened, so I think that's a really important position to fill. The fire inspector position, I think, is also very important. My concern is that if we, that we, if we need to bump up the salary, we're not going to have enough left for the third position. That's my only concern at this point. If we do talk about code enforcement, policy-wise, I would like us to consider the perspective of the code enforcement advisory board because I don't think that we've had a discussion with them in quite some time and it would be good to have their input on, if we make a policy change in that regard.
Councilmember Questa.
Thank you. I've heard many different perspectives here, and I like this one and I don't like that one. Are we able to split these up or is this a yes or no vote on, I'm for all or I'm not for all?
I think we can do whatever we want tonight. It's, we are under a timeline. We do have to make some kind of consensus agreement if we want to switch something out. We need to make it really clear tonight and then at least four people need to vote on it when we get to the regular meeting. Councilmember Ciara.
I guess from my perspective, how much, in terms of dollars, what are we talking about here for the, for the three positions?
I have those numbers. It's a total of 261,000. The fire inspector makes up 92, about roughly 92,000 of that. The dispatcher is 82, and then the third position is around 87.
I didn't hear your numbers.
Fire, 92, dispatch, 82, and the third position, 87.
Where is 92 coming from?
That is what our budget...
The salary range that we, what was most recently shown was 50,000 to something, so maybe, I know there's, there's a bump in benefits and whatnot.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that would be the total, the total salary plus benefit for that position.
So, then the third open position, the, where we're discussing whether a patrol officer or code enforcement, that's the dollar amount we're talking about there with benefits is 72.
87.
Point of clarification, does that include the additional money that is being requested in act, to actually get somebody hired? You said it would take about 20,000 more in order to actually get somebody on there. So, the amount you're giving is an amount that we believe nobody would be hired at? Okay.
That is what we've budgeted so far.
Okay. Councilmember Ciara?
I'd like to ask a couple of questions. So, I, what I was hearing from you, Chief, is that the funding that's been given for these three, it's enough to do what you want to do if you do want to do a code and bump up, but you need to maybe renegotiate or sit down with HR to figure out what the salary level would be to make it competitive.
Well, clearly, if you, if you opt not to go with a police officer and with a code officer, there is quite a difference in pay. And so, I think that difference would more than cover the fire inspector, the gap. And, you know, I'm comfortable if there's, if there's an overage, then I can more than easily handle that overage. But I think based upon the numbers that I have seen, I think we would be fine. And just a point of clarification, we do have those two dispatchers hired. We finally found two very qualified, so we are at where we should be.
Thank you. I was going to ask because I wasn't sure whether you'd gotten the both or not, but I knew you had one more. So, council, I think we have an option here to prove the budget the way it is, leave it up to the chief to decide how he's going to use it, knowing that there's a fairly strong support for a stronger code kind of reinforcement, but it's up to him. And then as we go later, we will have to look at code policy to change anything. I do want to say, there's this, oh, we're over, you know, we're pushing really hard and we're citing everybody versus we're not citing anybody. There was never a time where council said, stop citing people. That has not been the way the chief's department has done that, right? You continue to do proactive code enforcement. However, there are 35,000 eyes in the city that can help to give information and many things that happen are not going to be seen by just someone driving up and down alley, alleys. And sometimes it's just someone noting that there's a truck that's constantly parking in the same place and it's been a nuisance and there's some things going on and we count on one another to, you know, hey, you know, we saw that this last week even in catching someone who committed a crime. So, I'm not against neighbors having watchful eyes. That is what part of this is. I don't want them to be the ones who have to ever enforce and I don't think that's what we're ever asking. So, I would be in favor of having a fourth code officer, but leaving it up to the chief to decide how to use it. I'd like to say, let's go with the budget the way it was set up and let him use it and figure it out and figure out with HR if it's a code, then he bumps the salary up so that it's in the right level, if that's what they need to do. Councilmember Ciara.
So, Chief Collins, when you were putting together your needs for 2019, were you looking at the position as an open patrol officer or were you looking at it for code enforcement?
You know, actually, this year, asking for another patrol officer was not on my list of things that I needed. I was aware that council was somewhat interested in a code officer and that's why when we had that discussion, it was left up to you folks. And, and of course, the two other ones that I, the two I was mainly concerned about was, was dispatch and the fire inspector. And certainly a code officer would, you know, when you have three workers and a supervisor, there's only so much they can manage in the city. And so, that makes sense to me that they'll be able to operate a little bit more efficiently. And so, I like that idea. And, you know, now that I'm finally hiring cops and getting people healthy and back on the street, my suspicions were that we, we could survive next year, you know, status quo because I think if we're healthy, then we'll be fine and then we go from there.
So, then one other question, and this question's actually for Mr. Ringo. So, last year when we approved the budget, for the general fund, what were our total revenues projected for 2018?
Sure, if I have that information in front of me.
About 40, well, I'm looking at last year, so it's about 47.3 million. Does that sound about right?
Close.
For the general fund?
For the general fund.
Yeah. So, then in terms, in terms of expenditures, about the same, 47.3 million. What do we expect it to finish revenue was in terms of the revenues for 2018?
So, we're projecting...
And I guess to ask, regarding expenditures for 2018, we're still expecting it to fall in within 47.3 million?
We're, we're projecting revenues for 2018 of 47,600,000 roughly and almost the same for expenditures at the end of the year.
So, that's what we're expecting at the end of this year? Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Questa.
Thank you. You did mention you just filled those two dispatcher positions, so even with the filling of those two, you still need the third that's being described here in this budget request.
Yes, because that will allow us to effectively manage each shift. Working five and two at that, five days on, two days off, we would like to provide them with three days off and that additional body will, will get, will get us there. And that is because that job is just so darn stressful. And so, that's what, in a perfect world, we're hoping to accomplish by hiring that, that next position.
All right, council, we probably need to get some consensus here. I'm in favor of leaving it the way it is and leave it up to the chief to decide how he's going to use those between a police officer, a code officer. My preference would be a code officer and that at the same time, we bring policy forward for us to look at in a study session of ways we might want to go at it differently if there's support needed more for what the code officers are doing, there's more acknowledgement of what citizens shouldn't have to do, and we highlight some of the hard areas of the city. But that seems separate. We've got to decide on the budget first. So, that's my, my place on it. Let's hear from others. Councilmember Martinez.
I'm also in favor of moving forward as it is budgeted now and if we need additional discussions, then we should have those pretty soon.
All right. Councilmember Questa.
Yes, I will support to move forward. I mean, it sounds to me like we are hiring a code officer here by approving this. So, hopefully with that additional code officer, along with our review and possible adjustment to policy, we can really have this thing tackled and hopefully see a decrease in some citizen satisfaction as well in code enforcement. Thank you.
Councilmember Wink.
I'm in favor of moving forward and allowing the chief to make his decision.
Mayor Proton Russell?
I'm okay with moving forward the way it is right now.
Councilmember Berantyne.
I'm in favor of moving the budget forward to the way it is. If we hire a code officer, give the additional money for the fire marshal, and actually hire a dispatcher as soon as possible, because we just filled those positions. So if it was that desperately needed, I mean, we've already overstressed a population that we're apparently an additional person. And that's not the way it's currently set up, so I'm not hearing, kind of hearing some different things. If we, as Councilmember Questa suggested, if we go ahead and do the code officer, then we have the additional money, I assume, Chief, correct, to go ahead and do the additional $20,000 for a fire marshal and actually get one hired this time. And that is different than just giving the money and having him decide. I mean, we need to make that decision. So I'm in favor of leaving the budget as it is, but moving code officer with the additional money to the fire marshal so that we actually get one hired, and then the dispatcher, I suppose if we're actually going to hire one. I would like, at least within a couple of months, to get some kind of feedback back on how we're going to do this, both for the policy and how we're going to utilize that additional code officer if we're hired that.
Great. I have the code policy down for us to try and get on the study session. We obviously have to work with the chief on that. And Councilmember Ciara.
Yeah, and I'm in favor of moving forward as well.
Okay, great. Did you want to make one more point, Chief?
No, Councilmember Berentine has a very good point. And one of the things that we try to do at times is to, if you have money in your budget, I'm told that I'll be on the budget again this year, is that you try to hire somebody as close as you can to the beginning of next year, and because of those savings that you have. And so I'm kind of inclined to get that process started and hire him as close to the...
January 1.
Yeah, if it's possible. And so that...
Right. That salary break, it always saves departments over time, but it doesn't save it if you don't have the right personnel in place to do the jobs that are needed. So I encourage you to do that as well. Mayor Portem.
I just want to make a statement as far as setting this on the agenda. I think that it would be good, I agree with Councilmember Martinez, about taking this to the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee. They do not have a meeting till the third week in October. So I think we need to keep that in mind when we're scheduling the study session.
That's helpful. Regardless, the department that needs to figure out what policies are causing them trouble, or that might need to be thought about differently, they need to work on that as well. And I would imagine the Code Advisory Committee could be really helpful in giving feedback along the way. So let's get the ball rolling and be strategic about when meetings are. Great. We'll move that one forward. On to the next one.
Okay. So the third item is related to the two different foundations, Eath and EMIRF. There were, we heard a lot of comments, discussion, questions, just ambiguity around these foundations from the public hearing last week. And these are pretty large issues that we know we need to have a discussion about, and we need to talk about just general structure, purpose, organizational goals of these foundations. And it's critical, we understand that we need to talk about them. However, trying to keep true to the spirit of the budget and what we're here to do today, I do want to say that I think that needs to be a separate discussion, and what we need to talk about today is how these foundations impact the proposed budget that we're putting forward. Again, that's not to say we don't want to talk about them, but I think they do warrant a separate discussion related to, again, the structure, the organizations. So with that, I do want to talk about how Eath and EMIRF are impacting the 2019 proposed budget. The main thing that I want to point out here is that there are personnel expenses related to the foundations that we are incurring, and they total about 88,000 and 20,000 for Eath and EMIRF respectively. That is because we do have certain positions that are supporting these foundations. A portion of their time goes towards processing invoices and supporting operations, maintenance of the foundations, but that is the only personnel expense related to supporting Eath and EMIRF. The 326, roughly, $1,000 difference that you see on page 14 of your packet, there's a breakdown of those expenses, is attributed to support of common area maintenance that is legally required. That's not personnel-related expenses.
Quiet, please. This is not a time for citizens to talk. This is a city council time only tonight. Sorry.
So that money isn't going towards personnel. Again, the only personnel-related expenses we have towards Eath and EMIRF are the 88,000 and the 20,000. I hope that provides a little bit of clarity.
88,000 for which one?
For Eath.
Okay. And EMIRF is how much?
Approximately 20. The specific numbers are on page 14 of the packet.
Page 14, thank you. Council, Eath and EMIRF have been talked about many times by councils over the years, and we have looked at dissolving them, figuring out what our responsibilities are or not, and we've continued to stay the course and fund it until the end. And every year, of course, it can come up for discussion again. So, Councilmember Berentine.
On page 226 of the budget, it gives a very definite description of the $385,663. Serve as president of the foundation, providing oversight and admin for all common area activities at City Center Inglewood. That's a whole heck of a lot, more than 88,000. It is specific, just on this one page, there's several other pages in the budget, as there have been in previous years, that are a description, and it gives the FTE of .465 FTE. So that's, that doesn't say this is the payment of our common area maintenance, so I'm a little confused. Just on that one page, just on that one description, there's about $450,000 that's attributed to what looks like personnel for Eath. So if you want to explain that, that'd be fine.
Yeah. Kevin, can I defer to you for this?
Actually, I think we're going to have Jenny come up. She's our budget expert. She's the one who puts that book together, so she'll have a little better idea of what makes that number up for you.
So it's pretty similar to last year and the year before, the descriptions.
Right. And as you all know, we're still in our infancy stage of implementing priority-based budgeting. So our descriptions of our programs could be a little bit tighter and better, but that cost that is shown on the program section of our budget is total personnel and non-personnel costs. What we showed in the budget is the total cost, so the 326,000 of that 385...
What page of the budget is the 326 on?
It's not, it's not in the budget per se specifically. It's included in our line item budget, and I'll get you that, I think I've got that line item right here, maybe.
What you're saying is that if you drill down on the 385,000, you would find a couple breakdowns of that. This is a total thing. It's not what the FTE costs, it's what the entire program.
No, it's a total of FT, yeah, total FT, personnel and non-personnel line items that we've allocated to the program.
And is there anywhere on here for that description? Because I believe that when you add up all the FTEs, that's what comes up to our personnel, our personnel piece of that. So if you're saying that this piece of it is both...
Well, we have to be, we have to be careful. When we're looking at our line item budgets versus our program-based budgets, the actual FTE associated to, in our line item budget, is actually .45 of an engineering technician one position.
That's fairly close to what's...
It is.
To what's here. But that's why I've argued for a line item budget, because this isn't, I mean, this is what the public gets to see. This is what we're voting on.
And our line item is on, is in Open Inglewood. It is available for public review.
And if I had my computer here, I would ask you exactly what I asked last year, is show me where it is, and people were unable to do that. So I will be more than happy to come up with that piece if you want.
Hold on just a second. I can give you the line item if you're pleased.
Thank you. Just for the public, I do want it to be clear that the line item is online. You can go in in line items. This is a way that it's been put together so that we can see the priority-based budgeting process that we actually adopted several years ago. And I think what you're saying, the finance folks are saying, is that we're still not totally tightened on each of the categories on that, so...
Well, in the description, and last year, we went through, and at the start of each budget session, the departments are looking at their program inventory list and saying, should we maybe expand a particular program to be a little bit more descriptive of that particular program, or should we consolidate some of these programs that are truly task in nature and not really a separate program? So we're still refining that process, getting better at doing that. So once you have your program list, then what happens is, then you're allocating your current budget that has been adopted. So in 2018, we've already allocated our line items and our personnel and non-personnel line items to the best of our ability. Then after that, then we go through a scoring and saying, okay, how do our programs relate to or provide, or actually achieve our results, our program, our community goals? So there are a couple of different exercises we go through in order to identify the programs, how we allocate our costs, and then how we score those programs in terms of how they meet those community goals. So we're still new at it. We're getting better each year, but yes, there is room for improvement in refining our process a little bit, and also in terms of describing our programs a little bit better. You know, the employees look at a program a certain way, and we're able to speak a certain lingo, but I think we have to be better to explain those programs in terms of layman.
Could I interrupt and suggest that, in order to improve the information that was provided to all of us in the budget, clarifying the description of that line item would go a long way?
Oh, absolutely.
And that's a very simple thing for us to do, to clarify what is actually in there. And that's a very good suggestion.
The concern then becomes that it's not broken out there. I have looked at the online to try and get the information on there, and it is not easy to break these out on what's going on. The common area maintenance, even on the, even if you can't find it on the line item and you go back to try to see how much we're paying on the portal, you don't see the, you don't see the common area maintenance. You don't see the lease for this building on the portal. It's not like we're writing some check to Eath. It's a very difficult process to get in there. Then when you take all of these pages and can come up with 450,000, on each page, we're listed as cost to an FTE, that becomes very concerning. So we need to get some of that information broken down, because I don't see the breakdown for the 88,000 or the 20,000. So, and I think that's going to take a little longer than what we have here. Is there an opportunity to schedule some time then, if you believe that it's on there and that I can see that? Can I schedule some time to do that? Because it's pretty...
Oh, sure.
...a significant amount of money.
Sure. And I think it's easier, I think we have to, because I think when we sat down with city council after we did our initial implementation of priority-based budgeting, I think we have to go back and just kind of show you a little bit, once we get into the resource alignment diagnostic tool, how those, how our line items are actually flowing into our programs.
That would be perfect, because if what we're getting is the end result of that, and we are never getting the line item, then we are missing a huge chunk of information here, and that's exactly what I would like to have happen.
Yes.
Could we ask you to schedule a tutor session for everyone again, just to throw it? I had no trouble finding this, but I think I've been going and looking for several things like this, and I kind of have it down, but it's not intuitive.
It isn't, it isn't. But they do have a great summary report.
In that case, I believe the mayor can show it to you if you can bring it up right now. If you can bring it up, since you're very familiar with it, if you can bring it up and I can take a look at it, I'll feel better.
Mayor Portem Russell is next.
I can. Okay. I actually was going to suggest that, I actually would love to have this tutorial, but I also would like it around Eath and the common area maintenance and the certificates of participation, because I think that would help us understand also the budget piece that surrounds Eath. The one question that I have, so this 326,000 that is at the bottom of the response, which is our common area maintenance charges?
And that's the city's portion of the common area maintenance charges.
Okay. That is the city's portion, but did I hear you say that it includes some of that salary? The salary for, or did I misunderstand?
No, no, the salary would be separate. The 326,000 would be what we would pay vendors or contractors. And that, again, that's just an estimated number. I think last year, we ended up spending around 226,000 is a number that's coming to my head.
So it's just how ever much they bill us for the common area maintenance is what we pay, and this is an estimate of...
Exactly.
Of what they'll bill us.
Okay, so we're estimating a bit high.
Point of clarification, is that, are you talking about the 385?
No.
And then you're breaking it down to...
The 385 is the total cost of that program, the estimated total cost.
Minus what you think the FTE is costing supposedly, and then the rest is common area maintenance.
Okay.
And, yes, yes.
And when you go into it, you should be able to break down to see every single thing that's charged.
Absolutely. You'll see personnel costs and the various line items, whether it's office supplies or contractual services.
Right. It's all there. It's amazing as a, it's a robust tool.
It really is. No, it's fantastic, but again, it's, these are our estimates as best we can, and we put these estimates together at the beginning of the year. So the 2018 budget is allocated, and then in order to show the 2019, we're basically doing a percentage of what those programs cost in terms of your 2019 budget. So again, it won't get more refined until next year, when we're allocating our 2019 budget to our program inventory list.
Well, if either you or the mayor could do that, I will...
She'll be much better. I need my laptop if I'm going to do it. It's hard to look, it's really hard to look at any of it on an iPad, that's for sure.
No, and there's a beautiful Excel document that comes out of it.
And I just need that before I vote. That's all I'm asking, if we could do it before I have the...
All right, so let's not plan on having a tutorial for all of us before then. If people need this, like, within the next week?
Yep.
Then can you set a time?
Absolutely.
If you don't want to, if you don't need to do that right now, that's fine. You don't have to go. We'll put together another tutorial later.
And I can send you all an Excel spreadsheet that has everything listed out by line item.
Oh, that's the other thing to do, too, would just be to put it, to convert it.
And where it correlates to the budget.
Oh, yeah.
That would be fine. Thank you.
Would that suffice for everybody, if she did that on Eath and EMIRF? Okay, great, great. So, any other questions about this one? This was a big one, that there were lots of misunderstandings, or it's hard to understand by the descriptions, I do believe.
No, we could do better on that.
Yeah, so for all of us that have read these, if you've made any notes, like, what the heck is that, question marks, make sure we give that to them, because if we aren't understanding it, probably the regular person who's getting in probably doesn't either, so hand those off to them. Sure. All right. I think, are we ready, I think, are we then in favor of moving this part forward? Do we have enough information, or you will get enough?
Yep.
Okay? Anything else on it? No, all right. Not last, fourth one then.
Great. So the last item is really an item that we're bringing forward to make sure y'all are in the loop and well-informed of some things that are coming up.
You said you're the expert. You stay up here.
So, again, this is just very informational. I want to preface this with no decisions have been made at this point, but staff has been working diligently towards finding opportunities to improve our property casualty coverage, as well as find some potential cost-saving benefits. So with that, there is an opportunity that we've identified for us to switch from SERSA to, I believe it's One Beacon would be the provider. Again, no decisions have been made, but we do hope that with this transition, that we can get better coverage, and it's a potential cost-savings opportunity. Should council wish to make that transition, we will have to vote and decide to leave SERSA and notify them before, I believe it's October 20th or 22nd. We will be... We will be coming to you all with some additional information during the October 15 session, but at this time, it's just to inform you all that this is something coming up.
Mayor Protem Russell.
So, is this, moving this direction is already included in the budget?
It has no impact on the budget.
The higher amount is in the budget, so if we do the switch, there would be savings.
And I'm not sure that the public can hear you.
The SIRS amount, which is higher, is in the budget, so if we do the switch, there would be somewhere in the neighborhood of an $80,000 savings.
So, we have, the budget is set to do SIRS the way we've done it?
Correct.
Okay. Mayor Protem, did you have anything?
No, not right now.
All right, I'm just gonna go on down. Councilmember Questa.
Thank you, very. How often do you guys shop for the insurance rate? Is that annually that you look for new providers?
I
That's a good question.
Yeah, that's more, but, yeah. We'll get Murray up here. All right. We're gonna shuffle.
Director Maria Gonzalez is here to talk about shopping. No.
Shopping, oh, wow.
Shopping for insurance.
So, no, not every year. The insurance world is a very steady world. It's not like buying insurance for your vehicle is, you know, we have to have years of experience. And the change that we are proposing is not all insurance, it's just a piece of the property and casualty insurance. So, we don't shop every year, that will be silly, because it's such a huge enterprise. That's why we have, it's so late in the year, and that's why we have so little windows, because it's a very steady world. So, we just did it this year, because we saw that possibility for savings, and as Kevin and Jenny said, and they see, there is a huge potential of savings, so we want council to take a look at it.
And certainly, I appreciate the $80,000 and some change on that. It is the same services provided between the SIRS and the One Beacon?
Yeah.
And so, there isn't a set frequency with which we shop around on insurance. It isn't every other year, every quarter year, it's just, what prompted it this year, then?
Well, there has been huge changes within SIRS, management and policy changes, and that's what prompted us to look outside, to look elsewhere.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. You said the potential savings is $80,000?
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct? Okay. And then we'll learn more about this when we discuss it on 15th.
Yes. Councilmember Sierra.
Just in terms of the process, who is involved in deciding whether or not we're moving to One Beacon or staying with SIRS? I guess my big question is, is the madam attorney involved as well, in terms of last steps?
Big time, yeah. It's a big part of the decision-making, so.
Anybody else, I guess, in terms of?
Yes, there is finance involved, HR, because we have all the insurance negotiations, the city manager and the deputy city manager, we are all involved in the decision-making. We also have, and again, we are preparing the materials for the 15th, we have a very detailed analysis on what the changes are to present to you.
Okay.
So, not only experts within the city, but experts outside the city participated on the analysis.
Okay.
Councilmember Barantin.
That's a lot of people involved. I'm kind of surprised that it's coming to us so late in here. Have we ever had any other insurer besides SIRS?
Not that I have known of.
So, to make this kind of change like this, and that there were some problems with SIRS or some issues, I'm surprised it didn't come to council, and I'm a little concerned about having you saying that there's just this window here where it seems like it's been discussed and analyzed for some time, and so I'm a little concerned that it's being pushed like
So.
... this at the end. I don't want to just take the bait of $80,000 savings without knowing what's going, without having the full information of what's going on with this, or understanding what the issues are with SIRS and why we're moving away from an entity that lives and breathes and dies and has for decades gone ahead and served municipalities. So, if there's an issue, SIRS provides other services for us, doesn't it?
Councilmember Barantin, can I ask a question of them first before? So, you're not suggesting tonight that we're moving away from SIRS?
No, as we said
No, you're saying that something's coming later. Tonight, we're talking about the SIRS budget and approving it the way it is.
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Barantin.
But this is being currently done by SIRS, and we would be not doing it with SIRS if we moved in this direction.
Let me clarify. First of all, I don't fish normally, and I don't use fishing as a way to refer to something as serious as insurance. We take it very, very serious, and it's this late on the game, because that's what the vendors will provide. I mean, the insurance world is a very complicated world, and we ask them to look, because we have some issues with SIRS that we're gonna discuss with council when we bring the issue forward, but they don't give you a lot of space to make those decisions. So, we do have the analysis done for you, we're gonna present it in a future session, and you will be able to find out what the issues are. What is in the budget is the most expensive cost, so if we make, if you make the decision to change the insurance, there will be some savings associated with it, but it's not only the savings, it's other advantages to the city, and we're gonna present them on the 15th.
And when does the decision have to be made?
Hopefully, that same night.
Well, no. No.
In answer to that, the SIRS requires notice to withdraw by the 22nd of October, and we just got this information Thursday from the broker, who'd been working on it for months, which is why we're alerting council to it tonight. So, if council decides to take no action, we'll stay with SIRS, and that's fine, I mean, they provide a good service, but if you decide to move to another based on all the information, and there's lots of data for you to make that decision. It is a short window, but you have until, you know, we have to let SIRS know by the 22nd of October.
The 22nd, so, yeah. I mean, the window is very, very small.
We have to let SIRS know by the 22nd for all of the insurance that we get through?
It's property and casualty. We're going to stay with SIRS for workman's comp, because they are doing a fine job in that arena.
And that's, so I'm gonna ask the question again, all of the insurance that we do with SIRS comes due at the same time?
Correct, yeah.
And we would just be making a decision on this one section of it?
Correct.
However, the HR director has stated that there were problems with SIRS, and we need to know, I would like in the presentation to know, how that affects the other insurance, why it only affects this portion of it and not the rest of the insurance.
And we will present all that information the night that we have to make the decision, yes.
Councilmember Questa, are you sure?
Yeah, so if we were to not make any decision by October 22nd or keep status quo, the next opportunity to change would be October 19?
Yes.
Here we take, thank you.
Councilmember Wink, I did see yours up for a sec. Are you sure you didn't have another question?
Oh, you did. Yeah, I was curious about the level of involvement of our city attorney in the process, which member Sierra asked, and given SIRS, as member Barantin mentioned, given SIRS and CML work so closely with so much of municipal government and so much of what I see and do as a council member, so I just wanted more information about the relationship and whether there was a problem, or whether something just has changed to make it more beneficial for us to consider another route. So, we're being promised this information, so I look forward to seeing this information and reading through it, so I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you. I think that clarified, so we're not making a change in anything yet. You're gonna present things to us with all the reasons pro con, so when we do have to make a decision, which has just been sort of alerted, you've been alerted by in the last week, so this is not something necessarily you've been brewing over and forgot to tell us, this is something new. Great, just wanted to make that really clear. Are we okay with moving forward on this, everyone? Anything else you need on this?
Well, it's been a couple of months, so you do have quite a bit of information to be able to provide an analysis.
As I said, we're gonna provide you plenty of information, believe me.
It's like a lot of people were involved, so I look forward to it.
Any other questions on this one? All right, member Sierra.
Well, not a question, but just a comment, but thank you very much for coming up on such short notice and being prepared with the budget, so, thank you.
Appreciate it, too. Mayor Protem Russell.
Were you asking if there were any more questions on the budget?
No, on these fourth, on this last thing, and then
Okay.
And then, we will find out if there are other things that did not come up.
All right.
Is that it? Yeah. Okay, so, kick it off, Mayor Protem Russell, I think you have other things, obviously, so
I do have
A few people, Jenny might want to come back up.
Yeah, Jenny, call Jenny. The question that I have is on page 349, where there is no proposed budget for the Employees Benefit Fund in 2019, with the note that the Employees Benefit Fund is combined with Risk Management Fund. I would like to understand why, and is that problematic?
Maybe we just pull up, pull up before the chair.
Pull up another chair.
Is that 349 or 249?
Page 349.
Three.
And then it goes back to page 344.
So, your question is why we're combining the funds?
Yes.
Is to take advantage of, we have a very hefty fund, and again, I don't have the exact numbers, I can't provide you the numbers when we talk about insurance, but it's related to it. In, with, under the umbrella of workers' comp, we have a very hefty fund to pay for the excess claims that we have, and we cannot use it for anything else but workers' comp, okay? That's the reason why we're combining the funds, so we can use that umbrella for all the things within the city.
Okay, I get that, but what happens to the employee benefits? I mean, if we're taking money out of the Employee Benefits Fund?
We're not taking money out of anywhere, I mean, we're just combining the funds, so we can apply the hefty fund that we have with SIRS for, I think it's over, it's very close to a million dollars right now, we can use it for other benefit-related issues. We are not taking money out of benefits to give to workers' comp. We are combining the funds, so we can use that emergency fund that we have with workers' comp for other benefit issues.
Okay, so, there's like, it's estimated actual at the end of the year of the Risk Management Fund is like 1.6 million?
Yeah.
And so, then you're going to add that 6.139 million to that?
I don't have the numbers with me, I don't think that those numbers, I don't know, Jenny, do you have more insight on the numbers?
At the end of 2018, we're estimating the Employees Benefit Fund to have about 7,398, well, actually, no, 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 excuse me, we're gonna be transferring 551,577 from the Employees Benefit Fund to the Risk Management Fund.
Right, where?
And that's under Other Financing Uses on page 349.
On page 349?
Under Other Financing Uses, we have 561,577.
Okay.
And that's gonna be transferred out of the Employee Benefits Fund and transferred into the Risk Management Fund, and that's on page?
344.
Thank you.
344.
344.
Okay, so, my question is, then what happens to, what, that 6,415, total uses of funds? Oh, that's the total?
Uses, yeah.
Okay, so, how are we going to pay for employee benefits? Where are we gonna pay that from?
That's actually being, but, if you notice, in the Risk Management Fund, our budget has increased from 2018 of 1.4 million to about 7.6 million. So, we're basically budgeting the Employee Benefit Fund in the Risk Management Fund.
Okay, and where does that?
And that would be under page 344, under the 2019 Proposed Budget column.
Okay, and so, the employee benefits, the 6 million, where does that revenue come from?
That will come from insurance payments for health, dental, life, vision.
So, again, we are not taking money from one to the other, we're combining the two. We're making one unique fund for both accounts.
Could you explain maybe the why, a little bit more why, there's some flexibility that you're looking for here? What are we not able to do now that you will now be able to do?
It's not what we are not able to do, it's what we will be able to do. So, right now, as I said, the workers' comp, yeah, it's not like we are, it's not the restraints that we're looking at, it's what we will be able to do. Right now, we have a very hefty emergency fund on the workers' comp, okay? And our workers' comp is actually a lot lower than it used to be. We have gotten a lot better within the city, okay? So, we have that account with SIRS, it's like a deposit that we have with SIRS, and right now, because it's under a different fund, we cannot use it for anything else, okay? So, we have that money stocked in there, and we, I don't know when we will be able to use it, okay? We will never be able to replenish that fund. So, if we wanted to look for another way to do workers' comp, we are always looking at a million dollars that we have invested, if you want, with SIRS, okay? If we make one fund, we will be able to use that, for example, to pay for, if we have a huge claim into the medical, instead of paying out of pocket, out of the budget, we can use some of that fund to pay for that huge claim that we may have on the health insurance side. That's why we're combining the two funds. It's not like we're taking money from one to the other, it's just making sure that we can utilize that savings that we have with SIRS, that workers' comp fund, to cover other things that may be more pressing and more urgent for the city.
Did I answer it?
Well, it was kind of clear as mud.
Well, again, it would make a lot more sense when we talk about insurance, and I'm gonna have John Weber here, she's the expert, she can tell you exactly how we're gonna be able to move that money, okay? So, that's a question that I would like to say for that day when we talk about insurance.
I'm not sure if this is Mayor Protem's issue underlying it, but nobody wants anyone's benefits to be cut, and especially if it's retirement or towards any kind of
Or even the health benefit.
Yeah, to be paid down in some way, I mean, it's gonna get protected even though it's put together.
Yes.
That's what I want to make sure.
What we want to, exactly, that's what we want, that's what I said, it's more that what we will be able to do, so we can protect and ensure the continuity of benefits by being able, if we have a huge emergency, to tap into that emergency fund that we have only with workers' comp right now.
Okay, so now, if we have a huge emergency, what does that mean? We, as the city, have a huge emergency, what is this money used for, then?
So, the city has been partially self-insured with health benefits for several years now. That means that if we go up and above what the insurance company is covering, we will have to pay out of our pocket for that money, okay? So, this year, we have a claim that is gonna be in excess of a million dollars, and we're covered, but what will happen if we are not covered? We have a million dollars with SIRS that we can use right now only for workers' comp, so we will have to scramble the money to pay for that excess claim.
Okay, so, the bottom line is, by moving these funds together, the $1 million, we have other money that, so SIRS needs their money in this fund, is that, but we'll be able to use this other money?
For other claims, like, I don't know, for example, vehicle, okay? If we have a huge issue, or we have a lot of claims with vehicle collisions with the police, okay? We will be able to cover some of those claims that may not be covered otherwise with, by having all the money in one account. So, that's the best figure I can use. Imagine that we have now two different accounts, and we have, you know, the money scattered around, what we're doing is putting all our money together, so we have buying power with that money.
Okay, so, and was this, I mean, I have suspected for a while that we're self-insured, was this necessarily, has it been public before? Mayor, did you know that we are self-insured?
Yeah, I know, we've had, part of our stuff is self-insured.
Yeah, it's been, way before I came in, I mean, when we went into Kaiser, and I think it's been 10 years that we had Kaiser, right? When we acquired Kaiser, the city became partially self-insured, so it's nothing new. I mean, this has been like this for a long time now.
Okay, so, that's, you all know the history, the Finance Department, correct? Was it a decision made at that time by the council, or was it made because we went to Kaiser?
Well, I think, I don't think, I think it was before even we went to Kaiser, because we used to be self-insured for three, you know, up to three claims. I mean, we always wanted to have a fund balance of 100, or at the minimum, in the Risk Management Fund of $450,000, and that would represent three major claims at 150,000 each. That's my understanding. I don't know if it's in connection with Kaiser or not, I don't believe that it is the case.
So, I mean, we do have, some of it is insured, so it's really not the deductible?
No, 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 it has nothing to do with the deductible. I mean, we have been partially self-insured for a number of years. I mean, I wanna say more than 10 years, and I can research it, but
Okay.
It's more about having the liquidity to pay some other claims. Instead of paying out of pocket from the current budget, we have the money stocked in there, doing nothing for the city, so we can nothing for the city, so we can, we can respond to those, those claims if we had them, without having to scramble money or take money from a different project.
Okay, so this money is in a specific fund, I mean, all the money of the city is in a, in a big pool, right? Or not, so like this would be specific in a specific fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Verantine.
What money are you paying out of pocket for certain claims, out of which one? Out of the benefits fund or out of the Risk Management Fund? You just said we're, instead of paying money out of pocket for certain claims, we'll have more money to leverage, which one are you paying out of for certain?
If we had the claims, we will have to come up with the money, I mean...
You said, instead of paying out of pocket for certain claims, which, which funds you generally pay out of pocket for?
Again, if we had the claims, we had to pay, we have to come up with the money, that's what I say, we have to scramble money.
Pay out of the Risk Management Fund or claims out of the Employee Benefit Fund generally?
It will depend where the claims are, I mean, if it's a health and benefit claim, it will be paid out of the health and benefit, if it's a risk, like, like an auto issue, we will pay it out of the risk, right now, that's the way it's set up right now.
Doesn't seem like you're paying too much out of the Risk Management Fund, because you said that's the one that's more solid, so I would assume that you're paying more out of the Employee Benefits Fund, because it's not looking too healthy for the last couple of years. The problem is, is that you've got a budget, and that you're using the amount of money for the workman's compensation, and that's what you're planning, that you're going to be leveraging, but it, the expenses, the use of funds is using that workman's comp, so I'm not seeing where you're, I mean, I see where you're shoring up this Employee Benefits Fund, it's, it's in sad shape, I think we need to get some additional information on why it's in sad shape.
Okay, so, so...
And then find out exactly the workman's compensation piece of it, because you have the money being expended, so I'm not sure how we would be able to leverage that money when it's, when it's being expended, and I don't want to put the city at risk, because this is the property and liability, the workman's comp, that's the Risk Management Fund. Employee Benefits Fund is for the dental, life, and that, and it's having some trouble here from 2015 on, it's having some trouble. So I don't want to put the city in an odd position for its workman's comp or property and liability, because according to this budget that's presented, we're using these funds, they're being used.
Okay, so hold on one second, I, I know you like to hear your voice, but let me just answer one question at a time, okay?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Let her...
I didn't hear you say, I apologize.
Exactly, let me, let me answer your questions, because you've been talking, and the benefit, the benefits are charged to the budget, and they change every year. So basically, we have four hundred employees, we budget how much their benefits are going to cost, we budget, and we spend it every year, that's what is supposed to be done. We don't, we are not taking it out of the fund, and the fund is, is not an investment fund that has a, that has a performance, okay? It's an expense, it's the, the cost of doing business. Do we have, we have employees, we have to pay their benefits, so we budget for it, we put the money on the fund, and we pay it out, okay? The money that I'm talking about is money that we've been saving in the Workers' Comp, because we are very, we have a very low incident rate on the Workers' Comp, and it's tied up in, in a fund that we can only use for Workers' Comp. Now, we have been seeing an increase in auto claims, for example, okay, because we have more vehicles in the street, and we have to serve more citizens, and accidents happen. When accidents happen, if they go above what we expected or are above what we predict, if that's a word that we can use, it goes above, we have to pay more on claims, and if we have to pay more on claims that we have on the budget, we will have to come here and tell you guys, we have more claims or more accidents that we expected to have last year, we don't have enough money, so we have to move money around. If we have all the budgets, all the monies in one account, and we have the insurance with CERSA, we can tell CERSA, okay, you know the fund that we have for you, with you for a million dollars? That auto claim that came in because we, I don't know, we had an accident on the motorcycle, and we have to pay the motorcycle again, you can take it out of the fund. That's what we're making, we are combining two accounts that we had to be able to leverage the money that we have under the Workers' Comp. It has nothing to do with how we pay for the health insurance and the dental insurance, and those are two different separate accounts.
Great, thank you.
My question is that you've combined them in 2019, and you have a deficit of six percent. It seems that combining them isn't fixing anything to the budget I'm going to be voting on. Hopefully that was succinct enough.
A deficit of six percent?
She's looking at, I don't know if it's, are you looking at actual...
Page three forty-four.
2019 Proposed Budget.
Oh, the minus six point five.
Yeah.
Right, that is including the addition of the, of the benefits, Employee Benefits is in there at six million dollars, so if all of the money is used up, your argument for that we're shoring anything up seems not to be the case.
Okay, so the benefit fund will be replenished, that's what is, is, is set up to do. We said, okay, we have four hundred employees, and they cost five hundred, or a thousand, or depending on what they pick...
It's still a negative balance.
Jenny, can you shed some lighter, Kevin, on this? Actually, it's a plus in the other one as well, so...
It's page three forty-four.
Between the, I...
Yeah, I, I mean, it, it's, it's basically showing, and it's because our employee, our uses of funds of Employee Benefits Fund is at six point one percent, six point one three nine, versus our anticipated revenues of six point one one four, so...
So this does show that combined...
Combine, the, the fund balance will, will, will go down about six.
It still has a negative effect of it, so I'm just asking...
Well, let's, let's just double check, because when we add property and liability, that's...
So the Employee Benefits is in there, right?
Twelve, twelve point five versus, and then, well, it's a combination of the Risk Management Fund also coming in a little, the revenue is a little bit lower than the projected expenditure. We're showing revenue of the Risk Management Fund of property and liability and Workers' Comp at eleven, excuse me, thirteen point six, or one million three hundred and, three hundred and sixty thousand versus the expenditures at fourteen point five, one million four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand.
This is not following the argument provided by the document, instead of having one fund that seems to be having some trouble, we're combining it into one fund that's going to be...
It's going to absorb, absorb a little bit of the overspending in the Employee Benefits Fund.
It doesn't seem to follow the issue of sort of likelihood information on why they were, on how we're going to go ahead and make sure that the city has, is healthy and it's property and liability, and there's some additional information on why we're in trouble for the last of the employees' benefits fund. Thank you very much.
I would like to have a, a little bit of clarification, when you talk about trouble, I still don't get what the trouble she's talking about.
I don't either, so maybe it's a...
I'm sorry, I mean, I'm not being difficult, it's just I don't understand what trouble she's talking about.
It's a hundred and eight thousand dollars short, it's six percent short, I was, we're being told that the combining of the funds is to make it healthy, that's not healthy.
It just, it appears, I mean, from 2016 and 2017 actuals, where our uses exceeded our sources in the Employee Benefits Fund by sixteen thousand, and then in 2017, they exceeded by two hundred and four thousand, so we'd have to look as to why our spending...
But again, yeah, the benefit is not a fund that will perform, I mean, the benefit is an expense, we put money in there, and we pay for the employee benefits as they come, okay? So we don't expect to make money on that fund, it's an expense that we have to pay, it's the cost of doing business.
Right, but I think what she's saying is that it's, it's depleting, so Mayor Protem...
The question that I have on the Employee Benefits Fund on page three forty-nine, where it says operating revenues, departmental charges, medical, dental, life, is, are those monies that the city pays for the employees' benefits?
It's a combination of the employer portion as well as the employee deduction, so it's the, it's the two.
So, but it comes from the city, the city is paying that...
Yes, because your, the deduction is from your regular wages that's deducted to pay for the benefits.
Right, and some of it comes, they're paying part of it themselves out of their paycheck.
Yes.
So if there's a problem, do we have to raise the revenue to, in other words, the revenue we're putting into the Employee Benefit Fund? Does the city need to come up with more money?
Either the employer has to contribute more, or the employee has to contribute more, or a combination of the two.
Okay, because just moving it to another fund isn't going to solve the problem.
And that's, that's not what we're moving it, we're combining the funds, again, I don't, and again, we can, we can go in depth on, when we talk about insurance. One thing is how we pay for the employer benefits, okay? That's your insurance in your car, you have to have a budget to pay, and if you have an accident, they will increase your insurance, so you have to come up with more money to pay. That's what the Health and Benefit Fund is. Now, we're talking about claims, and that's the other side of the insurance, okay? You have to pay your premium, that's what that seven million dollar fund is, to pay the premium, to have the insurance, that's the benefit, just paying for the benefit, okay? Now, if everybody has high claims, as I said, we're partially self-insured, okay? So if we go above what they call the stop loss, that's what the insurance call it, if we go above what we have insured, we have to come up with the money ourselves, okay? So, right now, we have a million dollars in reserves with CERSA, okay, for Workers' Comp, and if you look at our Workers' Comp numbers, we are very, very well maintained with Workers' Comp, okay? So we're combining the funds, in case we have an, an excess of claims, we can use that reserve to pay for some of those claims. Right now, because it's coming out of one fund, we cannot use it to pay for other claims.
Okay, but what happens if, we've got workman, workman's comp under control right now, what happens if there's an accident? And the workman's comp then needs to be there also?
We're still going to maintain that hefty reserve with CERSA, it's just we are leveraging to use it with other things, I mean, we don't want the claims to go up, but we have to be prepared, again, we see the trends, and we try to come up ahead of time. I cannot tell you what Workers' Comp is going to be next year with certainty, I cannot tell you what liability or accident are going to be next year with certainty. We look at trends, and we try to come up with a very close number of what's going to happen next year according to the trends, okay? So we're trying to be prepared for whatever may happen next year. We are opening our, our responses, or, or capability to respond to any crisis that may come, because we can have a crisis anywhere, I mean, we can have a crisis in, in healthcare, we get a strain of the flu that we don't have vaccines for or medicine for, and our medical claims are going to go through the roof. I don't expect that to happen, but that may happen, so we have to be prepared, that's what the, the world of, of budgeting for insurance is hard, we have to come up with something that is close to what's going to happen, and be prepared for it, so we don't have to go back and ask for emergency funds.
Yep.
Could I ask a question?
Acting Deputy City Manager.
Would it be very helpful to have the Risk Management Office provide more detail on past claims and what, what this means, and a more detailed memo? Would that be sufficient?
I think, yes, I think that would be helpful, because then this council could evaluate whether there's something we're going to have to do to increase revenue, because if it keeps going down, so the history of it, I think, would be helpful also.
I'm sure we can, we can provide that, but, great, thank you.
If I could ask for some, for my questions too, I would, I would appreciate that as well.
Yeah, oh, yeah, included in that, in that discussion.
Is it really clear what those are? So you asked for what the, how...
We have the history here, and it's been fairly well budgeted here, because what's been budgeted is, for the most part, gets used. It looks like this whole move is not necessarily to make it healthy, but to access this reserve, and I want to know how it's going to affect us if we access this reserve, because it seems like it might be a, a shoring up, a fix, a one-time thing that we can do to get the Employee Benefits thing, but then we've upped benefits that are not sustainable, so if we could mix those two, because it looks like we've budgeted and used workman's comp every year pretty close to what we budgeted, except for one year it was three hundred thousand, so if we could get that analysis, what you're talking about?
I'm sure we could.
That might help, because it looks like we're just shoring it up for one year with reserve, and that's might be dangerous.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions regarding this? All right, other budget items, might want to stay there, Maria.
Yeah.
Councilmember request.
Hey, Mayor, I was hoping you guys could walk me through the Police Headquarters Construction Fund, page two ninety-one has a pretty decent summary, and there's some other points as well throughout the budget that outline it. I see, you know, I think the voters were very generous in passing the bond measure here, and I think it's a very well-deserved building for the police. We're wrapping in 2019, I was hoping that you guys could go through what you have estimated the concluding cost to be, and I know we've noted at the bottom, 2018, 2019 expenditure amounts are high-level estimates, so even using those high-level estimates, where do we expect this to land when we complete, I believe it's quarter two of nineteen?
We're anticipating, I think, the completion of the building, and I think that's still around the twenty-seven million dollars, is, is my understanding, I don't believe we're, there's any cost overruns. So we're building in flexibility in the 2019 budget in terms of use of, of, of the premium, which was the five million over the twenty-seven million, that was the, the initial issue of the, of the bonds.
So if we landed that twenty-seven million, and so you don't have the estimated final cost available?
I, I do not know.
Anything over that twenty-seven million goes into that, will get, be pulled out of that five million, though?
Yeah, plus, I mean, and also include, included is interest.
I've got that at two point eight five percent, does that sound about right?
I think so, yeah.
And...
Would know, Kevin.
I assume that we are under twenty-seven, and it, and the updates we've received so far, it seems like they're on pace to hit twenty-seven, give or take a little bit. If we're below that, what happens to any surplus?
Again, it would, it would be, I think, treated the same way that any of the premium of the bond would be treated in terms of safety services, capital expenditures.
So we can spend any of that surplus money on something other than the Police Headquarters if it comes in under the twenty-seven million?
Safety, yeah, under the safety services, let's see if I have that information here.
And that was one of the questions, I wasn't sure if we were bound strictly to the Police Headquarters, being that that's what the taxpayers had designated it for?
Acting Deputy City Manager.
If I could interrupt, hardly an expert on this, but we have scheduled a study session on the use of the bond premium and the parameters about what it can and cannot be used for, and some of the items that might be appropriate, my understanding is it has to be used for the police capital projects, but, but that's scheduled for October first next, next week, so there'll be a lot of detail and opportunities to ask questions at that time.
Excellent, thank you, thank you.
We're actually going to see some requests, so that's why it's on it.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, other questions?
I'd like to get clarification, when, when do you think...
Could you say that a bit louder so everyone can hear it?
When can you have that information for the benefit, will we be able to get that this week?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. I think I got it. Great, any other questions? Concerns? All right, thank you very, very much for all your work on this, and for punting when you didn't necessarily know you were going to have to do this tonight, I appreciate it, so keep everybody healthy there. Keep insuring them. All right, why don't we take a quick break? Come back for item number four. I might go to bed, really.
We'll see.
We will see. Sorry. Baby, huh? I saw you coming.
What are you doing, Kim?
Did it get resolved?
Uh, yeah.
Is it there? I don't see it.
It's, it's okay if you don't, I mean, but...
You just don't plug it from there.
Okay.
Did you ever get that?
No.
Do you know where I live?
I can't do.
That's my...
So two years of his hands.
Leadership, but these are sort of the main content, so let's get some questions.
Beautiful.
Let him know when he comes back in here.
Leadership, but these are sort of the main content.
Let him know when he comes back in.
She said it's still, it's cracking, problems.
Oh, really?
Was working fine for about a half an hour before he got-
Oh, really?
No, it was like, like, second show. Like, let's say someone says something, and then it chomps off. And then he pushes it again, and he did the same thing, and it chomps off. It happens all the time, so. It's happened numerous times, but it needs to be pushed. Because it's really not cool for me.
He is a type of-
Right, right. It's been probably, I mean, anybody can tell you it's probably the third time I've had.
Hey, girl?
We don't make any change. We're deciding now what we're deciding. Yeah, he'll be back next week. So we're good. If you come on Monday night, we're happy.
What I'm end up doing, that's-
Good to see you. Good to see you. We get to hear that you're doing well.
Yeah, yeah. We're going to take a trip, go back to, my wife went to Syracuse, she was-
Oh, really?
Go back to last year.
Oh, really?
But we'd already bought tickets.
Thank you. Normally, there's one here. I'm just going to put it on top. Or maybe I'll talk to him this one, I'm just like- Thank you so much.
Okay. Ooh, that'll be nice. I've always wanted to go. I've never been. I've done Ottawa, but I haven't been a month ago. Yeah, the cold would be nice.
Yeah, yeah, that's the other thing.
Good seeing you, Bob.
How's it going?
I'm doing good.
I heard how everything went Saturday. I saw some news.
I haven't heard anything yet.
I don't think, I talked to- Anyway, I talked to-
Will.
Will, and he was concerned with the market slammed at the first, but he didn't send out anything until he felt. Yeah, yeah.
Excellent. I don't want to speak so upset. I doubt it, but I guess I won't. I never know what I've chosen. Yeah, that'll be nice. See ya. I've just spent four or five minutes today talking with a gentleman, and I think the big, the big, if they could have the last study, the- They're all going to flood it. Talk with the guy who-
She said, she said.
Our director of- And while we're something, I was just wondering, because it forces you to try and stretch it to more than, and many of the sites, this is why we're just doing this. And he said, I was saying, it's, they were also referring to talking to people, and so I didn't do that. I just wanted to just- I don't, I don't know. I saw that. And that, that's why I'm usually, I mean, even if that was justified, I'm happy to send us.
Sure, okay.
Thank you. Yeah, and he's actually, he was really great. Like I said, the guy, amazing. So he was really happy to talk to me. So that's why he said that a little bit to read, and then he's got. Because I was telling him, somebody, somebody different. That's one of the things that I was trying to understand. We just got to find out, because we have the slides, don't we? We need to do that, especially that part. It was to- About to, which is 55 minutes, not right by two. And where that came about, I was trying to get to just have a point. Is it because of the, are they allowed to say a little term based on the question? Really? That's really great. I'll get the hand. No, I didn't, I didn't, I don't think I saw it. When did it go out? It came from- I didn't get anything. I should look at my-
It didn't, you didn't spam me?
I don't know, because usually- We could gather everyone back together. No, it's great. I love it. No, it's fine. You can turn it off and not waste the light. No, it's fine. All right. There could be-
Entry email. That's the next point. See, I already have eighty-four minutes. I don't have one book.
Normal. Generally has like the quintessential standard, but I have some that I made, just like, it's actually a very name, terrorism.
I'm going to say, because it's not, I was kind of curious. We only have these two, and-
I mean, we just got it on Thursday, so I'm getting the books made for all of you.
I didn't bring it up, so now that makes more sense. So I was trying to figure out what the discrepancy was in the- because if we were looking at present, and-
Actually, we're looking at one of them, and that is all, it's not just the money.
All right.
They left me. They left me. See? Everybody left me.
Everyone can take their seats. We are moving right along. All right. This member, Parentine, on her way in, do you know, can you pick her out? Can you, do you see her coming? Okay, great. All right. I, our next item is the interim city manager hiring process, and I wanted to give you sort of an update on what we did this last week, and then Director Maria Gonzalez is here to help us with some next steps. So, last week, we all agreed that there were three of us who were going to get together and kind of go through the job description, which had been cut and pasted from several, and some, and try and make it a little bit clearer for everybody. We discovered on Friday that there were three of us, but there wasn't a posted meeting, and so I called Mayor Pro Tem Russell and asked her if she'd spent very much time working on it yet, and sort of weighed out which one of us had spent the most time on it. So I decided to just meet with Member Wink and Maria Gonzalez and Dorothy Hargrove, and we hashed through it with Mayor Pro Tem's blessing to, we'd be sending it out to you anyway. So you all got it. It's certainly not a set in stone. It's really meant to try and make it more concise. And the way that we went about it was, we looked, we went through every single item that you had on the very first one, and tried to rate them as to what categories they really did belong in. And it seemed like there was so much redundancy. Once we did that, we saw these patterns that led to us to come up with the leadership piece, and then executive level management supervision, and then the other duties, that it really needed to be condensed into something a little bit more straightforward. So that's what you got, and so now I think we're open to tearing it apart again if we need to, and get it where we feel good about it, and then coming up with a process from here on out, with the process of taking those that have come forward to say they're going to submit, and they're in that process now. So, any questions about how we came up with the city manager job description to start with? So let's get some feedback on it. What would you like to see clarified, changed, added? One thing we did add that wasn't in it was the requirement to live in the city, but that's for the permanent one. The interim, of course, would not be having required to live here. That was not in the original job description.
Yeah, we brought that from the municipal code.
Any questions or concerns about the job description as we came up? Nothing? Mayor Pro Tem?
There's one thing that, that I'd like to perhaps reconsider. I mean, I don't, under the preparation and training and under working experience, where it says 10 years progressively responsible experience in municipal government as a manager, division manager, department head, or business management. I think that maybe we shouldn't totally limit it to just municipal experience. And I'm not saying that you don't need somebody that knows how to work with government. I think business experience, high-level business experience, could bring a piece to the city that, and then, I'm not saying you don't need municipal, so perhaps one of the things that would happen is the deputy city manager would be able to bring that piece. I mean, if, or vice versa. I mean, that is a thought.
Yeah, one of the questions would be, should we separate these two between interim and permanent? Because I would, I would like to say for the interim, I would like them to have had 10 years of city experience. For the interim, and then for the, for the regular, I could see myself loosening up on that perhaps a bit. Maybe it's not continuous, ongoing, progressive, but maybe there's a cumulative 10 years. I wonder if we ought to state both and say what we're willing to do in one versus another if we see some differences there. But I agree, it could be different.
Also, there is a line in there that says that a combination of education and experience will be considered. So, I mean, we have, we have a very flexible combination of things that we can look at. We had that discussion on last Friday, and, you know, we agree that, you know, it's not exclusive of anything that anybody can bring. So it will give us more space to accommodate to whatever we think it should be the right combination.
So that, it might not have noticed it. It's up here at the very top of that second page.
Yeah, it came out, it came out.
So I thought, I thought it had gotten cut out. If you turn it, I mean, that's the way mine printed it.
On page two?
Section page three, which is under, on mine, the way mine printed out.
Well, mine just-
Say it at the bottom of yours? Yeah, and then it says an equivalent combination of education, training, and relevant job experience.
Mine printed out at the bottom of the page.
Okay, so that's, I thought it had been cut off altogether, and so I was a little upset with how we cut that off. But that was supposed to be how we get a buy with not the 10 years.
So we may get somebody that has 10 years of experience on business and only have a public administration master, and we think is the right person for the job. That's what that line is there, to give us flexibility to play with whatever talent we get into the talent pool.
Okay, so, right, on the education, it doesn't just say public administration, it says business administration or related. So it doesn't have to be public.
It doesn't. That's what I'm saying. I mean, we can play with several different combinations, and that's, that's what we try to do in HR when we make a job description, to give us some space for criteria to be applied.
Right, so this little-
It's like a disclaimer.
Yeah, disclaimer.
It's clear.
Could that be put under the work experience?
Yeah, I will make sure that that gets-
The other two are certifications and driver's license, which don't have any bearing, really. I think it's fine to move it up to work.
And I mean, so I think if we have that in there, and then I think it's something that this council should decide, and when we're interviewing people, if somebody is maybe deficient in one area, that we could ask them how they would address that.
I'm going to, I'm going to use your perfect segue to talk about one more issue related to that, okay, and is the questions and the interviewing. I'm working on an interview guide that will have every section that we have on that job description with several questions for you to pick, okay? So we can have the same interview guide for everybody. I only got it done by Friday, so I haven't, I don't have it ready for tonight, but I will, will be sending you, for your consideration and your choices, a guide that has all the sections on the, on the job description, so we can make an informed decision when we're interviewing, okay? With questions for you to pick, and then we decide how we're going to divide the interviews.
Okay, let's, let's hold on for that a second. We're still talking about the job description. So, Member Martinez?
Thank you for everyone who worked on this. I really appreciate your time on this. I'm comfortable with the way it is written. I think it's going to be important to keep the municipal government in here. To me, it doesn't matter if it's, if it's progressive experience or kind of broken up, but I think it is going to be important to leave that municipal government experience in here. But other than that, I'm comfortable with how it's written.
Councilmember Questo?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, you just alluded to, do we have one specific to interim or one specific to what will be our permanent city manager? That has not been decided yet, then? I guess this document that I'm looking at, this is strictly for the interim?
Well, in terms of, I, I think we use this for the interim, but obviously, we would not require them to move to Englewood for six months. So there would be something that would, there will be some, I think, omissions to some of it.
So you mean both? I think he's asking if this applies for both positions.
This is it. This is the one we're looking at.
Right, right. So probably what we need to do tonight is say what out of this might we set aside for the interim.
Okay.
But this, this is the city manager description that you all wanted to do so.
For instance, a strategic plan that reflects short and long-term community goals, certainly of very worthy activity and critical activity for permanent, but I wouldn't expect an interim to work on, on something of that nature.
Yeah. We'd want them to be able to pick up our strategic plan and help us move it forward, but not, not bring any more into it unless you see some glaring issue, and he says, you guys are nuts, you know?
Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's a good clarification. Are we okay with it, then? All right. Councilmember Wink?
Fantastic.
Yes, I agree.
So, so I just- Councilmember Sierra?
Yeah, I, too, am good with the document. I guess one question I have is, for you, Mayor, you did state that you would be okay being less, or being more lenient on the description for the permanent city manager, but not necessarily with the interim. I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, that's a good question. I think, I'm thinking about, so when Eric came to us, he did not have 10 years in a row. When he came to us, he came from private, and he had spent four years, and then 10, I mean, he had a total cumulative way over 10 years. But it was interspersed with some private work as well. So, and, and he was great bringing some of that development to us, so it was, I thought it was a fine combination. The reason why I would say for the interim is I want someone who really knows how to work with cities and not just be cutting their teeth on this in any way. So, and that's what we're going to get with the kinds of people that are applying anyway. They've been in a city for a while.
Yeah, and I guess my thinking behind it was, when I was looking at the job description, was that in terms of an interim, I want to get somebody in place as soon as possible, mostly because it was the wishes of- mostly because it was the wishes of our acting deputy city manager, Hargrove, to, to be, to not necessarily be in the city manager position for very long. So, I would like to move it forward, and I was just thinking if those two go against that.
Oh, yeah, hopefully not, because it seems like they're, they have...
Can I ask you a question? Why do, why do you think they would go against that?
Well, if, if we're gonna have more stringent requirements for an interim, then it may drag out the process.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Questo, do you have another?
Oh, no, pardon me. Although credit to Councilmember Sierra for getting that title right on the first try.
He read it.
Oh, God.
All right, great. So, if you see any other glaring issues, though, let us know, but otherwise, this will be it. And we will take the six, we will take the permanent living in Denver, of course, it allows you to do it in, or Englewood, six months anyway to do it, so actually, it doesn't matter. You have to move in within six months of your hire, so this is gonna be a six-month contract for the interim anyway, so it probably doesn't matter.
Six months to do it?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just checking, if you thought it was shorter, we better do some other work.
So, do you want to give us, then, go to Gonzalez?
Let me give you an update where we are. We initially have seven people that was interested on the job, and I sent them the preliminary job description, so they could see something of what we're thinking about. And out of that seven, three already said that they were not interested. So, we have three candidates from the outside, recommended by ICMA and...
CML.
CML. ICMA and CML. I totally draw a blank there. I'm waiting on finishing the paperwork. That's the reason I didn't send you resumes on Friday, because we didn't have, one of the candidates is out of the country on a family reunion, so they had no access to their documentation. So, I will get the resumes by Wednesday, and I will send you, so we have three external and one internal. Okay? So, we have four total candidates for us to consider. So, we need to move the interviewings one more week. So, I'm gonna ask you to look into your agendas again, and we can come up, we have come up with the second and the third. We need to move it, so we give them enough time for them to interview. And you will have their resumes by Wednesday night. I expect to have all of them. I will forward them to you, so you have plenty of time. Now, I have a question for you. Do you wanna interview those four, or you wanna discuss and just see what the resumes are and decide how many you wanna interview? That's a question for you to decide. We have four candidates that I'm pretty sure, I mean, I have, I already, I have three resumes, and I'm waiting on one resume and an offer letter. So, I'm pretty, pretty sure that we have four applicants. Do you want to interview the four, or you want to see the resumes and decide how many you wanna interview?
Councilmember Wink?
With so few, my initial instinct is to interview all four. However, have you spent any amount of time looking through the four?
Of course, yes, I have. Yes, I have. The ones that I have, yes, I have looked at them.
So, then, would it be your recommendation, given we haven't seen them, that we look at all four, based on what you've seen?
I don't wanna make a decision for the council. I would rather you discuss the resumes before you commit to an hour interview.
Then, let's look at them.
Yeah. That would be my recommendation. I don't wanna make any decisions for you guys, but I will, I will have you look at the resumes before we commit an hour to interview people that you may...
I was only asking your opinion, understanding that your opinion is not our decision. Just for your feedback and your position, given your role, your expertise.
I will, I will review the resumes. That's my recommendation.
Very good.
All right, so it looks to me that we need to look at calendar again, and, yeah, so, and you can take off what we had. Got more time, but you're gonna make it up the following week. So, Director Gonzalez, you're suggesting that you'll have it all to us by maybe Thursday?
Yeah, Wednesday night, I should have them all, and I will be able to send them to you Wednesday, Wednesday night in an email. I will send all the, I will try to send you one file for every candidate. So, you will see the, we asked for a, for a letter and the resume on one file. So, you will see four attachment on that email.
So, Council, I cannot remember, did we have the night of the, of Thursday, the 27th? Is it a possibility to look at them to decide if we're going to interview all four or not? Because then we could start the interviews next week. If we can't, then we'd have to...
I didn't have that on my calendar.
I know we didn't.
But I could.
I'm, yeah, I'm asking you out of the blue now, should we?
Oh, so you're asking if?
If we just come together, decide on who we're interviewing, and perhaps the actual questions, and then the next week. So, if we could do that on Thursday, the 27th?
But that's what we, we're gonna get the information Wednesday, and then...
Yes.
We got one night, or...
Yeah, one day to look at four resumes.
I'm okay with...
I mean, I look at...
Oh, wait.
Does that work for everybody, though? I thought there was some reason somebody couldn't make that day or something.
That's not good for...
I think it was, I don't know. I can do it.
So, Thursday, the 27th, we're gonna have a special meeting. I just, you know, getting used to this posting, and HR, HR doesn't deal with that a lot, so...
Thursday doesn't work.
I thought somebody didn't have, yeah, so it doesn't work for you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wink, because it doesn't really work for me either, so I really...
Okay, two of you are. All right. So, let me ask you another question. Would you be interested in an early morning?
How early?
6:30?
Okay.
Well...
7:30 with a breakfast?
I have to, on Thursday?
Yeah.
I have to work, so...
7:30 AM?
Eight to five doesn't really, before working.
So, no early mornings?
No.
You can have a yoga session.
I mean, I have a day job.
All right, so then we are into next week. So, next week, our study session would have to be our time, probably.
Let's do that.
Will we come at 5:30?
We don't have anything on a study.
I think we do have the bond, yeah. So, it would, I don't know, yeah, that's really the only thing on it.
I don't want us to be rushed.
Right, so we're gonna be talking about the bond premium for the police building that night.
That's that additional $5 million on how we're gonna use that.
That is the, yeah, so that's coming up Monday night.
And we have a regular meeting.
And then we have a regular meeting at 7:00. So, should we meet at 5:30?
I could do 5:30.
I can too. I'm just concerned that's not gonna give us enough time for...
What are we hoping to accomplish in that year is a half an hour, essentially? And so, what are we hoping to accomplish?
Well, I, I don't know that the bond thing is gonna take us an hour.
Yeah, I don't think it will take...
To argue, argue it through. I mean, we need to get some consensus on it, but...
And on that night, we're deciding who you're gonna interview, and if you wanna add anything to the interview guide. That's, that's the point, the two points that we're gonna discuss that night.
We could always meet after the regular meeting a little bit, too.
That's, that is true. I mean, we can after.
Right.
But we will have had the applications...
With more time than just one night to have looked at them. So, everybody should have an idea. It might not take that long, and we could probably have questions already sent to you all that you could come with, you know, what you, what are you two laughing at?
I think we always under, we're always really positive about the time we think it's gonna take us to discuss something, and it always takes quite a bit longer.
Well...
I don't know.
I'd have to agree with her on the bond.
The mayor did really good tonight.
Tonight, we did all right, and I'm gonna go to bed.
On the bond thing, I'd have to agree with the mayor. I kinda think that that might be, that's a little more constrained, anyway.
And I'm, yeah, I mean, I think people probably, so, could we meet at 5:30, and, and then if we need to continue on with something regarding the mayor, the manager interim position, we'll come back after the regular meeting, finish it out. Is that okay?
Yes.
The budget's supposed to take a lot of time, by the way.
Works for me.
Yeah, okay, then let's do that. So, October 1st. So, that's what we will do. We'll come at 5:30, and if you need to eat, 5 o'clock, there'll be a little something here. I, I did, I was a little bit nervous about coming in tonight and realizing we have time together, but we didn't have any info, and I did give this to the clerk, but it's just something I sketched out. I would've done this on, on big paper if we, if we'd gotten to this point. What I did is only an idea of how to go at this.
Is this one page of this?
Yes, you need to take one, except I forgot to take one. All I did was take the job description categories.
Can I get one?
That, yes. I took the job description categories that we just agreed to, or at least in general, and I added the 10 years of prior experience on the top. And this is a way for us to think about the kinds of questions that we get from Maria when she sends them. So, we might look for some questions from hers on what from their past in particular is gonna match up well for this interim at this time for us. Leadership here, sort of four or five major components of what's in that leadership job description segment, and then the next one is the executive level, level, the same kinds of things. You, you may find some other highlights you wanna utilize, but if you wanna think about what kinds of questions would you like to pull out that will help us get at these segments of what we think this position is, and then we could, in the future, use something like this, and you could rate, as well as keep notes. So, it's only an example.
So, I will send you something very...
She's got something quite a more sophisticated.
Very structured for, for interviews. So, I mean, how to rate them, and, you know, according to the job description. I will send you that, so you can pick, and I will send you questions that you can pick from also, so...
Yeah. Great. So, she will be sending those, and we can all do a little homework on them, just figure, you know, figure out what do you wanna ask, what do you think is gonna be really important? There are some wonderful pages in the two documents that Maria gave us last week or the week before on hiring. There's a whole segment in there on what kinds of questions.
Questions, yes.
And there's even a little segment on what city managers have reported, questions or things that they felt didn't go well when they were being interviewed, and what did go well. So, just four or five things on each one of those pros and, and cons of their interviewing process.
Yeah, some of those questions are best practices. Yeah, they're very standard, very good questions, so...
So, those are both helpful resources, just sort of peruse. All right, any further questions about the interim position?
Dates for interviews. I know we're gonna decide how many, but they set up two dates.
All right, the week of October 1st.
Because I need to tell them when we're thinking, so they can clear their agendas.
October 2nd?
Yeah, we...
Are we all available October 2nd?
Well, that would be the day after, though.
Yeah, we can not, I won't be able to get a candidate from one day to the next.
Oh, that's, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're looking at the week of the...
The 8th, yeah. Yeah, we need to move it one week.
You want to go to the next week, totally?
Yeah.
So, I'm free that week, at this moment.
Oh, for a second, I thought she was asking you. Maybe we shouldn't be at the...
Yeah, we can set up two dates tonight, and if we decide that you're gonna, you're gonna interview only two, then we will cancel the one night that you wanna cancel, but...
The 4th?
Could we, could we do one on the 3rd and the 4th? Is anybody available the 3rd and the 4th? Are we all available? 4th would probably be best, because it would give us some more time to get them in, but um...
Like a normal time, like 6?
6 o'clock on.
I can do 3, I can't do 4. I can do Wednesday, but not Thursday.
Okay. Anybody else can do?
I can do Wednesday. I can do both.
I can do either.
Okay, so let's, it sounds like Wednesday's it, because we really want him here.
Okay, I'll, I'll check with, with the candidates tomorrow and see if they are available on the 3rd or the 4th, after 6:00 PM for interviews, and I'll, I'll send you guys an email with their availability.
Not the 4th, so...
October 3rd.
Only the 3rd. We'll do two on that night, okay?
And then, the following week? It's really too bad, there's not, Member Questo, you can't change anything on the 4th, right?
I have a wife out of town.
Okay, well, that can't be changed.
Otherwise...
Just gonna say, if it was something with your daughters, we'd have them here and take them out for ice cream after and all that.
And we're talking about 6 and 7, right? Those are the times that we're talking about, so I can check with the candidates.
Yeah.
Okay.
The following week? I am available the 9th and the 11th, the 10th. I'm speaking at something.
So, did we roll out the 5th? We can't do it on the 5th?
Yeah, you're at the, you're at an event that night.
Oh, yeah, I'm not available that night. I may put that on my calendar.
Because I am too, and that's why you're going.
All right.
Okay.
The 9th is okay for me. Is it possible to check on that Tuesday, the 2nd? I mean, just check with them? I mean, maybe they can, if we give them enough notice now. Maybe they can, I don't know.
I can, I could see some being able to come, especially those...
I can check, I can, I can all, I can, I mean, what is the worst that can happen? They tell me no?
And you tentatively tell two people?
Yes, I will, I will send an email to the photo room and tell them if they are available on these dates and these times.
That might work.
Yeah, I'll check with them tomorrow. That's not a problem.
That would be awesome, because then we'd have it done next week, possibly.
I think there's one that is not available, but we can always set it up for later, but I'll check, I'll check tomorrow.
Should we set aside the 2nd, the 3rd, and the 9th, then? Just so that we have it covered?
Yeah.
And we're gonna have to make a decision, anyway, but hopefully, we can make it after the...
Okay.
All right, great.
And all at 6?
And we'll all start on 6:00 PM. Is that, does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
I will check with them tomorrow, and I will report as soon as I hear back.
So, 6 to 9?
30.
There's a waterborne meeting on...
Yeah, I know, but that's at 5, right?
Yes.
They get done quick.
It's, it's just like the, the housing authority is on the 3rd.
Just a couple meetings I would have to do.
They're done early.
Okay, so, it's the 3rd and the 9th.
Second, third, and 9th.
And you have something on the 5th.
I do, I got it in here now. Second, 3rd, and...
You're gonna make her panic. She's gonna be calling you in. It's the 5th.
You're going to get great food too at that event. Alright, I think we're set with that, is there anything else, Director Gonzalez, that you need from us?
Not right now, I just wanted to let you know that we do have, again, as I said, I'm pretty confident on the candidates that we have, so.
Great, alright, thank you very much, so we're on to council members' choice. Who would like to pick this up? Member Questa.
You bet, Director Gonzalez, while you're up here, are we conducting, and I, credit to the citizen for asking me, are we conducting exit interviews on the folks that we've had leave currently? It's pretty common practice in private industry, is that something we do here in Inglewood?
Yes, we do. We haven't have any reporting on them, but yes, we do conduct exit interviews with the people that leave, yes.
Meaning we don't have reporting on them, that information just goes in a file somewhere?
Yeah, it doesn't go, and again, we're changing that, we're preparing a report from HR, not only on exit interviews, but hires and temp hires and all that stuff, but yeah.
Is such information available to council?
That information, meaning, do you want to know?
Just the responses to the exit interview.
I could, I mean, if you give me a day range.
That would be governed by personnel and privacy confidentiality.
Well, I can, I can give you the answers without telling them who they're from. I mean, I can give you a compile, a summary of some of the answers without, I mean, protecting privacy, of course, without telling you the position or the person, I could probably compile what are you looking for?
That's your.
In terms of time, time spent.
Certainly, no, I would just like to hear the candid answers, what did folks have to say as they were parting?
I'll go through some of that and see if we can pull that out and make it available.
Friends would be nice.
That was one of them, thank you. And then the other one was Earth Treks, I'm sure everybody has seen it, the climbing wall over there. I've got a colleague and he goes to a place in Denver. He's switched over there and every time I drive past at the parking lot, it's really, really crowded. So I think we're stealing some business from Denver Walls and it seems to be a really successful business, so kudos to them. And that is it for me, thank you, Mayor.
That's Member Wink.
Thanks. My husband and I popped by Earth Treks in the opening, yeah.
Did you scale the wall?
I didn't. No, but I do climb, I'm certified rock climber, so, yeah, lovely facility and you are right, the parking lot was unbelievable. And, you know, it was opening day, so they were, it was free to participate, to climb, do whatever, yoga and use some of their amazing fitness equipment. So it was quite busy and I think it should be a really positive new entity in Inglewood. Certainly happy to turn that corner and see that, all of that activity going on. Saturday morning, or Friday afternoon, one of my girlfriends called and she's a member of KEB and asked if I could step in on her behalf for the household hazardous waste, whatever that's called.
That's what it's called.
Okay, the event they have every year, so this was the second of the two Saturdays when they had that event. It's at the wastewater treatment plant. And wow, before, I think at about 20 minutes to 8:00, so the gates opened at 8:00 and about 20 minutes to 8:00, there was such a line of cars that, I pulled up and thought there was an accident or something had gone wrong and I thought maybe I should go back home, should I drive around, what's going on here? But I walked over and it was just people waiting to go in and deposit their items. So it was very, very good turnout, as is usual, I think this is the 27th year that this event has gone on and there were staff from our community development office, a staff member from traffic in Littleton and we had a lot of fun, it was a great fun, Carl was there, Carl Adams pulled up and teased me. And it was a fun event, it was so fun, I was really glad because I hadn't been that intimately involved with KEB and to see that they spend most of their budget each year on this fantastic event. People show up and they pay their money and they're happy to have us properly dispose of all these items. So it was a real, really positive experience for me. So keep it up, KEB, and that's all I have. Yeah.
For two?
I would like to congratulate Councilmember Berentine on her win and the fact that she has not been recalled and I'm looking forward for this council to work together now and moving forward. Congratulations, Councilmember Berentine.
Thank you.
Member Berentine?
It's an interesting subject that you bring up with the directors because just going over this, in the last four years, we've had four HR directors, three assistant city managers, four wastewater treatment plant directors, three public work directors and three different finance directors. And so we've had in this four years, a huge amount of change over in the directors. One threw a death unfortunately, but, you know, that happens and it was very sad to leave, it was Dave Henderson, but the rest of them, it might be good to find out in the last four years why we've, why we've had this kind of turnover and what's going on, I think some of that information would be helpful. The notice that everybody got from the city manager that we were combining two departments cannot be done by the city manager, that is a charter issue and that has to be done by council. So I would like for us to look at that, I do not think that that can just go through on an email. I think that's of some concern, so I expect that we should have some conversation about that as the charter requires. And thank you very much, it was a blessing in disguise, as so many things can be. And you were fortunate enough to go through that election and I think in the end that that ended up being a really good, good thing and a very positive thing. And quite honestly, I think if you want to get issues out there and talk to people, this was, this was quite a blessing and I enjoyed it and I really had a great opportunity to go walk and talk to people and get a really good, solid sense of the community and I am even more entrenched in making sure that I do the job that I was elected to do.
Councilmember Sierra?
Congratulations, Councilmember Berentine. Yeah, we went through the same thing, just knocking on doors, talking to people, talking about the issues, so congratulations on your win.
Thank you.
Last week. I actually kind of wanted to piggyback on Councilmember Wink's comment about how, I'm just kind of curious if we're doing enough or what the proper avenue would be in order to show our appreciation for the people that do work behind the scenes for the city. I've had a chance to talk to a couple of people where it doesn't feel like we're doing enough to actually, you know, whether it's the Inglewood Blog Party and all the volunteers that were involved with that, or some of the other things. Is there something that we can be doing to just thank them for the work that they put into these type of events? Whether it's, you know, sometimes I do it through council members' choice, but I'm just wondering, is there another avenue that we can do that type of thing?
I have something I was going to say during my time, but I'm willing to respond now if you don't, if you want me to. I would love to see us do a, some sort of a regular collection from departments on things that are going well. Our wins, our challenges and overcoming, in that we start to build a different narrative about the city of Inglewood. It's been incredibly negative, you know, there's, there's no mandate one way or the other about how we're supposed to be, but I think the mandate from us is to lead us in a way that is productive and efficient and positive. And we, we look at things differently and I think that's always healthy. But I'd love to do some kind of, I remember one of the directors said that they'd been in a place before where they did that, but maybe it's, I don't want it to be onerous, but some way to collect, you know, what are our bragging rights today? What do I feel like, or on someone, you know, someone did something amazing and you want to tell that story.
For that I have an idea as well and that's that I really would like to see us honor the employees a little more. I think that it's very confusing for the public when people just disappear and appear. And, and we don't have that information where we used to in the, in the community, be more celebratory about the people that come into new positions so that somebody isn't here for two or three or four months and all of a sudden somebody's like, who are you?
Right.
Or that they just all of a sudden disappear and that's very disconcerting to people. I mean, about the one, I was, I found out from a constituent and that really shouldn't happen.
Right.
So I think that that makes the employees a little bit more communication for them as well so that they're celebrated, both when they're coming and when they're leaving too.
And I guess.
We used to do that.
Anything else, sir?
And I guess from my point, I just don't know who's involved with some of these projects. So, you know, I know somebody at a high level, but I'm only thanking them and I know there's a lot of other people behind the scenes, so. Any way that we could get names or, yeah, just show our appreciation, I would definitely like to see that.
Great point. And Councilmember Martinez, I think I, I think I just came all the way around. You have one more?
Well, there was a subject that came up and I think it is timely and it is the combination of those two departments, which is scheduled to take place on October 1st, we wouldn't even meet again until that point. If there was something that council should have some sort of saying, I don't want employees to get whiplash either, where they combined and then later we decide that shouldn't be done, or trying to pull apart a grilled cheese, everybody's already mended together. So that caught me a bit off guard as well, that it seemed that it was prompt and somewhat, I would say last minute, that we were getting notifications. And that's the only reason I'm revisiting it, pardon me, but that one did seem timely.
I actually pulled the city manager job description this week and I made a bunch of copies if you want them. I know you have the charter, but I just pulled it out, but because I did make some, you're certainly welcome to just look at it. Maybe our city manager can, can speak to it, but I believe a city manager, or my city attorney, our city manager does, I think, have the right to do that and has done that in a number of times the last three to four years, including with HR or a combination of it. But, but I could be wrong in the way that I'm looking at the.
And if that's written down, that's good, you put a discussion in, if you don't mind, city attorney.
Yes, if you look at, and just a second, it'll take me just a moment to pull it back up.
Oh, I know, yeah, I know.
If you look at Charter Provision 52G.
Yes.
That's what it is.
The language there says that the city manager has the authority with prior approval of council by ordinance to establish, consolidate or abolish administrative departments. So I think the way the charter reads is that this is something the city manager is supposed to be looking at, but it's supposed, it's something he should be doing in.
In approval.
In concert with the, with the city council. So I think per G, this is a direction he wants to go, but we'll have to bring it back by ordinance for, for council approval.
So then according to this email, the employees should be alerted then that they would not be combining departments on October 1st? Just so that there's a confusion for them as well, I'm sure they've been giving marching orders that come 10-1, you're combining, but it sounds like we are going to stall that so that there can be further discussion that comes before council.
I actually think, I'm just going to say Dorothy, I don't even want to try your title.
You could turn it around so you could see it.
I should, should respond to that. What they're talking about is the Water and Utilities Department and the water individuals have to continue working in the Water Department and doing their water jobs. So I'm not sure that in the short term, even if they did consolidate, that anyone would see anything different other than with the very top level person who is administrating Public Works and administrating the Water Department. But it is not my place to discuss that, I can only tell you legally if, if that's something that has moved forward on, we'll bring an ordinance back for that. And I would recommend that the employees be told this is a consideration, waiting for final council approval, if that's the city attorney's interpretation. But to, to not discuss it with them and what it might mean at this point would be, I think, disconcerting at this point. And I know that, you know, they've worked out a lot of the details so that employees could see, okay, this is, it'll give them a little more time to absorb that, but it also gives city council an opportunity to look at pros and cons and weigh in. But at least employees would be part of the conversation with that caveat. Because this had been done several times in the past, I assumed it was okay and there was also a time where they took one and split it into two, I think three years ago, that has happened. But when I read G on there, I thought, wait, I don't think this is totally the way it's supposed to be. Councilmember Berentine, I think, right?
The issue had come up before when this had, when this had happened and the charter. I don't know that the, when it had happened, I think before I got here, that the issue of the charter had been addressed or even acknowledged. So I do agree with the city attorney that it can't go into effect unless we put it into effect. And I am concerned about wholesale changes like this, huge changes being done when we're bringing in a new administration. That's, that's rather unheard of whether it's municipal government or whether it's private industry to do this, so I was kind of concerned about that. And I assure your concern, Councilmember Questa, that we don't want to have employees feeling like they're getting moved around at the last minute, especially when we're in the process of hiring a new city manager. We at least want to make sure that they understand that this is up for consideration, maybe, maybe not because we haven't considered it at all, it just got dumped on us. So that they understand that there's a process and that nothing's really going to happen on October 1st because we won't even be able to meet to make it happen.
Alright, let's, I'm feeling a little uncomfortable breaking any open meeting laws by not having an agenda item for this, so I think, is that enough to just go on to give you both some material to bring back? And we probably should set an agenda time that's appropriate, discuss it in the right venue, so I'll look forward to that. We might need to meet way late on the 1st, no, alright, thank you. I, yes, I had some, now it's Mary's time. I, I really would like to do some sort of affirmation process for the city employees in coming up with some sort of way to celebrate things that do go well along the way. We have not, I mean, we'll have a celebration for manager cake when he leaves on, it's actually on the 1st, which is actually going to make the meeting longer. So we will be breaking and coming in here and doing cake and the traditional thing, but we have not done a good job with that over the last several years and sometimes it's been by choice, I think, people not wanting anything. However, I think we can, you know, I don't think that should stop us from trying to do them anyway. But I would like to have some sort of routine way, so maybe I can, we can work with Maria on some ideas of how to do that as a HR person of how to, how to make it meaningful, you don't want to do things that aren't meaningful and just lip service to people either, so. I did go to Earth Treks, we had a ribbon cutting there a week and a half ago and there were three or two at least professional climbers and, oh my goodness, they were amazing to watch. And then the Nixons, go talk to the Nixons who own, you know, Nixon's coffee shop, they are big climbers and they climbed the day that we had, it was really fun to watch them too in little kids, 7:30 in the morning, scaling the walls. There are a lot of great, great things like that going on in Inglewood and that's the kind of stuff that I hope we can keep putting out there. Some businesses are doing some phenomenal new things and entrepreneurials are succeeding, so. The last thing I had is that Dr. Cog has taken some stands on some of the initiatives that we talked about and I will send those forward to you because of that, I don't, I'm not really stuck on us having to waste time given the fact that we're in this interim position and trying to figure that out. If we're going to have a huge conversation about whether we should be doing initiatives or not or supporting them and it's going to be unproductive, I'd just soon drop it and let the CMLs and the Dr. Cog avenues put forth an initiative. So let me know if you, I'm willing to withdraw that from our study session so it makes more room in the future, but if you still want it in there, would you just email Dorothy and say, hey, I still want to talk about it? That's, that's fine. Alright. Deputy, acting deputy city manager. I have two things related to people leaving in the interim acting stage. I'm in charge of the communications team because Allison Carney has moved on to another position. If you have communications questions, suggestions, please, please let me know. I'm hoping that that will be, be a short term and we can find other people to help fill that position, but I am in charge of that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Do we still have slate?
Yes.
Okay.
And you, yes, we do. The, and, but to, to give Allison Carney her due, one of the projects that she felt mad not to have worked on was some way to celebrate what's going on well in the city and city staff in particular. You know, find, find somebody doing something special and celebrate it. So they already have some ideas which I'd love to share with council, so thank you for those comments and we can, we can move forward on that. I also, and I hope you don't find this too awfully amusing, will not be here this week. I wouldn't want to work, you know, like five days in a row with this acting position. No, I had a long, long planned out of town vacation, so Thursday.
We wore you out already.
Yes, exactly. So my apologies, but Thursday through Sunday I'll be out of town and Margaret Brocklander, our IT director, has graciously agreed to step in and act as acting, acting city manager for those days. I will, I will send you her contact information and she'll be able to help you. And of course Eric will be back on the 1st for his last week, so thank you for that.
City attorney?
Just briefly, my team, the attorneys on my team will be going to the CML, continuing legal education, governmental training. We'll be leaving late on Thursday afternoon and will come back on Saturday. So there won't be any attorneys in the office on that, basically that Thursday evening or Friday. So I was really glad that it did not work out to have any special meetings that night because I was not sure how to get them staffed. So just letting you know.
Great, I think that's it, thank you, we're adjourned.
That little silver thing down there?
Have Crystal do that? Or your, who are you going to be using for your?
Was it?